Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mr. Attorney, do we have any information on closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report at a closed session.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rhodes, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Mayor Protam Judge?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review?
I do have a recommendation for you, Madam Mayor. I would recommend that we move item 3C1, the Youth Council presentation, ahead of the 3B1 Inside Investment Presentation, as it is a school night. And so it would be nice if our Youth Council member who's making our presentation could get out of here just a little bit earlier.
I'm good with that, Amy. Sounds good. We will do that.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, we can move forward.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, Presentation of Employee of the Month to Mark Anflick, Supervising Building Inspector and Environmental Services Director. Stratis Peres is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh. I was going to introduce Mark Anflick, our Senior Building Inspector. If you'd like to come and join us up front. Mark Anflick, over here. Mark Anflick is a senior building inspector in the Building and Safety Division with the Environmental Services Department. And on July 3rd, he demonstrated exceptional courage and leadership during a fire and explosion incident at a residence. This is the house that blew up due to the fireworks. Mark was the first on site, having witnessed the explosion while driving in the area, and he quickly assessed any immediate danger and called 911 to initiate emergency response efforts. Mark remained on site and assisted first responders. Mark's clear-headed actions under pressure ensured the safety of others and helped to prevent any further harm. This response, far beyond the call of duty, shows Mark's unwavering commitment to public service. Mark consistently goes above and beyond to support his team and the community with humility and integrity, whether by working after hours, including evenings and weekends, taking on additional responsibilities, or volunteering in the community. Please join us in congratulating Mark Anflick as Employee of the Month.
I think you have a fan club here. Thank you for everything you've done. That area is so heavily residential that your being there to get things started off really helped probably save lives and save properties too. So, really appreciate that. Would you like to say a few words?
Very grateful for this award. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mark, and thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of October 2025 as Bullying Prevention Month. And Community Services Coordinator Ryan Fowler is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of the City Council. The month of October 2025 is recognized as Bullying Prevention Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to invite the following individuals to come forward to the left of the podium. Dr. Jamie Snodgrass, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and Pupil Services, Simi Valley Unified School District, and Youth Council Members Mahi Daga, Vidica Gupta, Jasleen Kangura, Claire Creer, and Surya Ravi Kumar. I would also like to invite Elizabeth Rakowski, Junior Royal High School, to the podium to share a statement.
Good evening. One in five American students reports being bullied, making bullying the most common form of violence, according to multiple research studies. Bullying can take many forms: physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm, whether it happens in schools, neighborhoods, workplaces, or online. The effects of bullying are serious. Targets of bullying are more likely to face long-term emotional, physical, behavioral, and learning challenges. Many will withdraw from school, work, or community activities, and it is estimated that more than 4.5 million students skip school each year just because of bullying. Even more troubling is that in 85% of cases, no one steps in to help. But change is possible. Everyone's actions matter, and each of us has a role in creating a kinder, more inclusive world. By unifying with kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, we can make a difference. The Simi Valley Youth Council has made bullying prevention one of its priorities, and will be coordinating a citywide campaign to raise awareness and promote positive change. The month of October is recognized nationally as Bullying Prevention Month, and it is a time to raise awareness, encourage dialogue, and strengthen our community's commitment to create safe and inclusive spaces for all. Together, we can work to ensure that every student and community member feels valued, supported, and free from the harm of bullying. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Simi Valley, as we commit to standing united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and present this to you, Mahi. And do we have something we're going to say down the line? Okay, let me pass the microphone.
As a part of our bullying prevention campaign, we are coordinating a citywide Stop Bullying pledge at the City Expo and Simi Valley Street Fair on Saturday, October 25th, at the Simi Valley Town Center. We invite everybody to stop by our youth services booth between 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to sign our pledge planner.
We are also asking everyone to wear orange on Wednesday, October 22nd, in observance of Unity Day.
When we all stand up for those that are being bullied, promote kindness, and be more accepting of people's differences, and make an effort to include those who are left out, we will finally end bullying.
Well, thank you, everyone. Mayor, City Council members, on behalf of Simi Valley Unified School District, our superintendent, our school board members, and of course, our students, we are very privileged to be here and honored that we're able to stand with our students and our community members, to stand up against bullying and to encourage that partnership. And we all know that it all begins with the education of our students, from not only within our schools, but within our community, and those partnerships are strong due to the relationships that we have with our City Council, our school board members, and our students. We look forward to that continued partnership and what our students are able to bring to their peers and also the adults within our community. So, thank you very much on behalf of Simi Valley Unified School District.
Thank you very much. We really thank you for all that you guys do. You do a great job. And, sorry, go royal. Had to throw that one out there. But thank you all.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Police Sergeant Ryan Brennan is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation are Brooke Grayson and Amy Cornau of Seroptimist Simi Valley.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, and honorable City Council members. My name is Ryan Brennan. I'm the Detective Sergeant for the Major Crimes Unit of our Detective Bureau, and this is Detective Kellen King, and she is our lead domestic violence detective. Thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Simi Valley. This annual proclamation is a meaningful way to shine a light on an issue that impacts families in every community, including ours. Domestic violence does not discriminate across us all: economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. It violates an individual's dignity, security, and humanity. Across the nation, one in four women will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, and intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime annually. On average, 24 people every minute are physically abused by an intimate partner. Too often, a weapon is used, and the most vulnerable victims are young women between the ages of 18 and 34. Here in Simi Valley, we are fortunate to have strong community partners dedicated to prevention, support, and recovery. Seroptimist International Simi Valley plays a vital role, providing resources through programs such as the Live Your Dream Award and the Debbie Thomas Founder's Award, as well as community events like the Little Black Dress Fundraiser, Quarter Mania, and Stop Human Trafficking Awareness Program. Their work alongside law enforcement, service providers, and volunteers makes a real difference for those seeking a better life for themselves and their children. As we observe Domestic Violence Awareness Month, let us continue raising awareness, supporting survivors, and working together to end the cycle of violence. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your recognition and the ongoing commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. On behalf of the city of Simi Valley, I'm honored to present this proclamation declaring October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
As you can see, these ladies up here are from our Seroptimist Club here in Simi Valley, and they do a fantastic job supporting our community and supporting women and girls. So, thank you all for everything that you're doing. And are there still tickets for Little Black Dress? Okay, there's still tickets. It's coming up. So, would you like to say something, Brooke?
Thank you so much for giving us the honor of representing this Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As President of the club, I speak on behalf of all of our members and the committee and the work that we do. Live Your Dream Awards recognizes women who are going to pursue higher education. They're usually single moms with dependents, and they are in financial need. A lot of them have overcome obstacles, including domestic violence, addiction, and some have been in foster care. Lots of obstacles that they've overcome. Also, our Debbie Thomas Founder's Award is Financial Aid to Women in Crisis. So, if you know of somebody who was looking for a solution for a bad situation, please be sure to reach out to our club. You can find us at s i s v dot org. And I also want to give a shout out to our Simi Valley police. Personally, I had the privilege of being in a ride-along for the Simi Valley Leadership Program in 2023, and we had a call to support a woman who was going to her home and needed to have police escort to protect her as she was gathering her personal belongings. And I had a firsthand experience there. I was deeply grateful for the police and for their help with that situation. So, we are a great community, and it's great to collaborate, and I do appreciate the honor. Thank you. Can I have the police come up for a group photo with us?
So, yes, thank you all for everything you do, Detective Kellen, Sergeant, and Chief. So, I guess pictures. Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Week of October 18 through 25, 2025, as California Flood Preparedness Week. And Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Council members, and also good evening to many of my Public Works family out there in the back row. As the council is aware, flooding is a public safety threat which may result in portions of Simi Valley being at risk of flooding and exposure to over $1 billion in potential damage to buildings, infrastructure, and loss of productivity. The city participates in the National Flood Insurance Program administered by FEMA to provide flood insurance for property donors and residents. We also participate in the community rating system documenting the city's floodplain management activities that reduce flood insurance premiums by 25%. During California Flood Preparedness Week, agencies across the state work together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to prepare for a flood, and how to plan for recovery. Therefore, the city of Simi Valley proclaims the week of October 18 through 25, 2025, as California Flood Preparedness Week, to promote awareness and increase knowledge of flood risk, flood protection methods, and to prepare for a flood emergency. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchiwaki.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. We have no speaker for this item this evening. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3C1, Informational Presentation by Youth Council Member Mahi Daga.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of the City Council. My name is Mahi Daga, and I am an eighth grader at Hillside Middle School. I am honored to represent the Simi Valley Youth Council as I share an update on our initiatives and upcoming plans for September to October. Thank you for your continued support in our event and mission to make an impact on the youth in our community. On September 26th, the Youth Council successfully hosted the Seventh Annual Rock Painting Night in recognition of Suicide Prevention Month, drawing over 250 attendees who painted rocks with inspiring messages. Youth Council members will hide these rocks around Simi Valley to boost morale and raise spirits. In addition, we raised over $500 in our Yorlaland and Panda Express fundraisers, and these funds will go to the J E D Foundation, which provides resources and support for teen suicide prevention. Looking ahead, the Youth Council is preparing for one of our most meaningful events, the Youth Summit. It is being hosted on October 17th with the theme Voices of Tomorrow, which aims to empower students to speak up and take an active role in shaping their communities. Students will engage in activities and discussions where they can voice their perspectives on issues affecting the youth community, as well as develop possible solutions. This will assist the Youth Council in developing the work plan for the upcoming year. The Youth Summit's keynote speaker will be Arushi Samani, a student at UCLA who will share her inspiring journey of developing an environmental education curriculum that has been adopted in K through 12 schools. Her journey reflects the theme Voices of Tomorrow by demonstrating how young individuals can turn their ideas into meaningful change. In addition, the Youth Council will be hosting a food drive at the Youth Summit to support Safe Passage, a nonprofit organization that provides resources to at-risk youth. The Youth Council is also preparing for Bullying Prevention Month in October. To kick off the month, we will be accepting a proclamation for bullying prevention. We also plan to raise awareness by displaying orange ribbons on lockers and hanging posters that promote anti-bullying messages throughout school campuses. We have also formed a committee to create an anti-bullying public service announcement to be shown in schools. Later in the month, we will invite community members to sign a No Bullying pledge at the upcoming street fair and then proudly display it at City Hall. Additionally, we will be distributing bracelets to promote positivity. On November 13th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., the Youth Council will be hosting service projects at the Y E S Volunteer Fair being held at the Simi Valley Public Library. Everyone is invited to attend our next meeting tomorrow, October 7th, 4:45 p.m. to 6:15 p.m., at the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District Activity Center on Guardian Street. To stay updated on our newest events, please follow the Youth Council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, @SimivalleyYouthCouncil, as well as on TikTok, S V Y C two nine two nine. On behalf of Youth Council, we sincerely thank you for your unwavering support and for empowering us to take meaningful steps to implement initiatives that benefit our youth. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Daga, thank you for your presentation. And if you're an eighth grader in our community, our community is in great shape. October 17th Youth Summit, where will that be?
It will be at the Rancho Recreation Center.
Excellent. Okay, it's a great program every year, and if at all possible, I look forward to attending it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you, Mahi. Appreciate your report. So, if you had 250 attendees at that rock painting, which is a lot of people, how many rocks did you end up with? Do you have about that many as well? Or, I mean, that's a lot of rocks to be hiding.
Yeah, I think we've got a little more than, we've got, I think, almost double that amount, because I know a lot of attendees came and painted a couple different rocks.
Your work is cut out for you to hide all of those. So, I have one more question. And I confess, I came late. I missed the rock paint, but I went to the fundraiser. But in order for me to get the coupon, anyway, I had to actually follow you on Instagram that night. And so, I'm embarrassed to say, I finally am following the Student Council. What is the benefit of people following the Student Council? And I want to challenge my fellow council members to make sure they're following as well. But go ahead. Tell me why we should do that. go ahead, tell me why we should do that.
Well, when you follow the different platforms, you can get better informed on our events and what's happening, so you can stay, like, you can stay informed in our community, and you can help support our different events and initiatives.
Thank you, and I'm now repentant, I'll be better, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much, my great presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3B1, Presentation by Insight Investments LLC regarding the city's investment policy. And Deputy Administrative Services Director of Fiscal Services Marvin Lopez will introduce the presenters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. Tonight, we are pleased to welcome our investment advisors from Insight Investments. They have guided our fixed income portfolio since 2014 and have worked closely with staff to ensure we meet the city's goals of safety, liquidity, and competitive returns. Leading the presentation today is Mary Donovan, Senior Portfolio Manager, who brings over 35 years of financial services experience and is currently responsible for public sector group strategy. Joining Mary is Thierno Silla, who's been a Senior Relationship Manager for Insight for the last year and has previous experience at PIMCO and JP Morgan Asset Management as an investment specialist. This evening, Insight will walk us through the fundamentals of public funds investing, review our current investment policy, and review some of the key factors of the city's current fixed income portfolio. They'll conclude their presentation by discussing the current market environment and strategies. Please join me in welcoming Mary and Thierno. Mary?
Thank you, Marvin, and good evening, Councilmembers, it's good to be here with you. Marvin has done a great job kind of laying out our agenda, so I will skip straight to our executive summary, and by the end of our segment, which we plan to keep at about 15 minutes or so, these are the key points that we want to leave you with. So, I'll start with the first one, which is about the city's investment policy, and based on the many years that we've worked with you and our assessment of the policy, our view is that the City of Simi Valley's investment policy not only complies with California state statute, but provides the flexibility required to address the city's stated investment objectives of safety, liquidity, and investment return. When you look at the city's term portfolio, it has delivered an annualized return that is greater than that of its stated benchmark, which is the one-to-three-year Treasury Index. And as you may be aware, we're entering an interest rate cutting cycle this year, and as we move through kind of this phase of slowing U.S. economy, we believe that the portfolio is constructed in a way that will allow it to continue to deliver competitive returns versus the stated benchmark. In looking at your policy, there are a couple areas where changes could potentially be introduced that could, over time, generate incremental returns. One of those ways would be to increase the types of investments that are allowed in the policy and bring it up to par to what California state allows, and the other way could be to increase the target duration. Currently, you're targeting a one-to-three-year index, you could target a one-to-five-year index. So, over the next 15 minutes or so, we're going to walk through each of these in a little bit more detail to give you our assessment of the policy, how it fits in with state statute, and then we'll walk through the performance history for the portfolio and the relationship, and present to you how the portfolio is currently being built, and then we'll talk about some of the recommendations we have from an investment perspective before talking about the market.
So, starting here with a quick review of the city's investment policy. The investment policy meets the guidelines of California Code with respect to the authorized investments. That's in terms of the maximum maturity, the five-year maximum maturity for any of the investments, along with the credit criteria, corporate notes being able to be purchased. And then the primary, the primary investment vehicles for the portfolio, and this is really consistent with public fund investing truly across the United States, treasury and agency securities are really the bread and butter of the portfolio, and then the addition of the corporate bonds is an important piece of the portfolio for incremental return. The whole thing is built around the objectives of safety, liquidity, and then yield, and you'll hear us talking about that in a number of ways as we move through the material. So, with respect to the investing of the public funds, again, the focus is always on maintaining the highest standards because we are dealing with taxpayer dollars, right? So, we have no ability to fundamentally replace these assets if they're, if they're lost, so we have to deal with them very carefully, with a high degree of focus, again, on the safety parameter of the investment guidelines, okay? And that's something that you'll, you'll see as we move through the materials. Taking a look, though, at the performance, we have graphed here for you the total return performance of the portfolio over the last 10 years in various, various slices and dices, and the portfolio truly has performed very well. We're comparing the performance in the portfolio to the one-to-three-year Treasury Index, which has an average maturity or duration of about 1.8 years, so it's very consistent with about a two-year treasury note, and that, that's, that's meaningful in the, in the context of the portfolio's limitation on maturity horizon with that five-year final maturity guideline. So, as a, as a point in time, if we're looking at, for instance, the five-year performance, the city's portfolio earned a 192 annualized number versus the benchmark, which came in at an average of a 152. So, on an, on an annual basis, we're picking up 40 basis points of incremental return relative to the benchmark, and one of the things that we've been talking about is the potential for an increase in the average maturity of the, of the portfolio, shifting to a one-to-five-year benchmark from a one-to-three. And I just want to take a moment and reassure you that you've left no money on the table by having the one-to-three-year benchmark over the last 10 years. On a 10-year period, the one-to-three-year index averaged a 169, and the one-to-five-year index averaged a 168, okay? So, I just, it may be appropriate to consider a longer-term extension in the portfolio, but I want to be clear that there has been no, no damage done by the one-to-three, which just simply subjects the portfolio to a little less volatility in market pricing than the longer-term benchmark, okay? So, trying to manage risk in the portfolio is really fundamental to what we're doing, and duration management is the, one of the big levers that we can manage in the portfolio, and it's the primary driver of portfolio returns, okay? So, really an important takeaway there. On the next page, we get into looking at the slicing of the return on the portfolio on an annual basis over the last five years, and this is going to help to fill in the blanks on why those longer-term investments struggled over this particular time period, and you can see in 2021 and 22, we did witness negative total returns in the portfolio and in the market, and that was a function of the Federal Reserve bringing interest rates up in order to fight off inflation after coming, after having very, very low interest rates during the COVID period, and then they brought interest rates higher very aggressively, and that led to negative total returns. The city never had to realize those negative returns, okay? The portfolio structure was such that the, these securities could simply roll to final maturity, roll back to par, and you never had to realize those negative returns. But this is a reflection of market pricing, and you do have to disclose the fair value of the portfolio periodically in your financial statements. Had we been longer on the, on the yield curve out to like, for instance, again, that one-to-five-year index in 2022, that index had a negative return of over 5%. So, I'm just trying to kind of put some guardrails around the idea of the duration extension. It certainly is a, an important lever to pull in the portfolio, but it is one that should be done carefully and with the proper timing in the market. So, pretty, pretty interesting numbers there, good, good, good performance relative to the benchmark each year. And then, on the next page, this is a graph of the yield on the portfolio. So, the city's investment policy primarily calls for a buy-and-hold to maturity approach. It is, it is acceptable to periodically sell securities in order to realign portfolio assets, but typically, securities are held to maturity. So, it's not inappropriate to look at the yield on the securities in the portfolio as an important measure of return. So, in this paradigm, we're comparing the purchase yield of the securities to the average yield on the two-year treasury note, and in this, like, picture, you can see, we're lagging in the two-year when interest rates were rising rapidly during that period when the Fed was increasing interest rates. The portfolio is catching up, catching up, catching up to higher interest rates, and here we are now, in the, in 2025, we're outperforming on both a total return basis against the one-to-three and the one-to-five-year index, and we're also outperforming on a yield basis. So, the portfolio is in, is in really terrific shape, and again, very conservatively managed, very high credit quality portfolio, well diversified amongst asset classes and across the yield curve. So, this next page, just real quickly, and then I'll turn it back over to Thierno to talk more about the policy, but we just want to touch base here on our diversification of the portfolio. And again, California Code drives the investment policy guidelines, right? So, everything, everything in the policy complies with California Code, which allows for 30% of the portfolio to be invested in corporate notes, and we do maintain a pretty high allocation to corporate exposure, okay? Insight has a very deep resource to offer our clients with respect to credit research, and so we're very comfortable bringing that to our clients for the betterment of their portfolio return. So, about 30% of the portfolio in corporate bonds, treasuries and agencies make up the remaining piece of that. The next slide is simply a look at the way the portfolio is structured with maturities across the yield curve out to our five-year horizon, and again, managing safety, managing safety through the credit research, the fundamental reliance on treasury and agency securities as the mainstay of the portfolio, and then looking at liquidity management through the structure of the portfolio, as well as the securities that are selected, right? So, treasuries and agencies have a nice benefit in that they're a very liquid market, and so in the event that we would need to sell a security prior to maturity, those, those are the, those are the places you go in the portfolio if you need to raise liquidity. Go to your treasury, treasury ladder to start. So, those are just some nice attributes to that part of the portfolio. But with respect to this little graph, maturity distribution illustrates that the portfolio does have about 25% of the assets maturing within a one-year horizon. So, managing liquidity is one of the fundamental objectives of the portfolio, and that's done through the structure of the portfolio. Those maturities are always available for the city in the event that you would need liquidity for operating purposes, or they're available to reinvest, which gives us the opportunity to manage the duration and manage the credit exposure over time.
Any questions so far? So, we also wanted to speak with you guys about additional investment considerations should you want to adjust your investment policy to incorporate more flexibility, but before doing that, we have a page in here that just gives you a little bit of a sense when you look at forward-looking returns across different asset classes, and for this discussion, we're focusing just on equities and fixed income, and the reason we include the equities is to give you a sense of the difference in magnitude between kind of what equity securities can generate and what fixed income securities can generate. So, because of the types of funds these are, taxpayer dollars and kind of, we're governed by California state statute, we can't invest in anything in the upper part of the chart. Everything has to be within fixed income, and even there, you have maturity restrictions, you have credit quality restrictions, you have diversification restrictions. So, this is just kind of to anchor you in the types of returns you can expect over the next several years, looking at the portion of the graph that, that is in your investable And so, when we move to the next page, there are three investment types that state statute does allow that aren't currently included in Simi Valley's policy that you could consider for inclusion, and we wanted to lay out for you all both the benefits of inclusion as well as the risk considerations for adding these in. So, the three types are asset-backed securities, agency mortgage-backed securities, and corporate bonds that are registered under a special ICC rule called the 144A regulation. And from a, kind of, from a, from a safety and kind of when it comes to all the objectives that you have in your policy, the safety, the liquidity, and investment return, these would all kind of fit that narrative because it is allowed in state code. So, you could kind of bring the Simi Valley policy up to par to what state allows by including these. However, that being said, there are some risk considerations that your portfolio isn't currently exposed to, that you would become exposed to by adding these. The two main ones are liquidity risk, when you think about kind of what Mary showed earlier around the portfolio being made up primarily of government treasuries and agency bonds, those are the most liquid securities out there that are considered risk-free, so they have sort of the deepest market, and even in times of stress, you can always kind of find a buyer or seller for that, for those asset classes. When you get to things like structured products, asset-backed securities, kind of agency mortgages, when things are good, it's fine, but when you hit a crisis, then the liquidity suddenly drops out of the market, and if you're kind of in a moment where you need the liquidity and you want to sell, these may not be the best assets to own in this type of a portfolio. And other risk that is common within the structured credit space is either prepayment risk or extension risk, and what that means is that it introduces variability in the frequency and, and the cash flows that your portfolio is giving out. So, you could either get cash flows back earlier than you expected, or you can get them back later than you expected, and you don't want either. Kind of, you want this to be a very stable, very predictable, safe, liquid type of portfolio. So, adding these, you kind of have to get comfortable with this prepayment risk and this extension risk, and make sure that kind of in your forecasting, in your budgeting, you are counting for the fact that these things could happen and could increase the volatility of your portfolio. So, we'll pause here, this kind of concludes, oh, on the next page, we just have a few examples of what kind of these would look like. So, the first one is an example of an asset-backed security bond, the second one is a mortgage, and the third one is a corporate bond under 144A, but kind of, these are the main points that we wanted to present to you all today, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been looking at the monthly financial reports ever since I got on council, and the unfortunate part is that I come from the private sector and I come from personal finance, you know, looking at our own finance, and it's a different game. Liquidity of a personal finance is way different than liquidity needs of a city. I'm looking at last month's financial report, which is the only one I have, and what was in your guys' purview got exactly that month's benchmark, and so I was thinking, gosh, we're just meeting it, so I want to thank you for the long-term chart that you go, okay, so over the long run, it's, it's better. I want to talk about liquidity and the importance of that in the context of what you guys are, are managing for us. We have about half of our available cash managed by you all and half managed internally. The half managed internally is more than a six-month cash on hand for us. So, if we were to give you direction that liquidity for that piece, which you manage, is less important than overall return, would you change your strategy and what you're putting the things into based on what you showed us with the additional assets that you could be in?
Well, the investment policy benchmark is the one-to-three-year Treasury Index. So, if you were going to increase the assets in the portfolio without a change to the benchmark, we would benchmark, we would manage it consistently with how we've been managing the portfolio. We would roll it in, and it would be part of that overall strategy for the portfolio. If you felt that it was appropriate to change the benchmark, to move it out to that one-to-five year, then we would, over time, incrementally increase the duration of the portfolio, and fundamentally, that would lead to less liquidity, liquidity in the portfolio, which I think is maybe what you're driving towards.
That's what I'm driving at, is hopefully that we can take some piece of our investment and start looking at the less ultra-conservative, and, and if we even got a half a percent more on half of our investment, that's a half a million dollars a year that could be added to the pile.
Okay, a half of a percent more on half of the money was our big, was our big words. That's our big words. Because, for instance, the securities that we were talking about that are not included, the ABS and the MBS securities, those could be held to a 20% allocation per California code. So, I just want to, just trying to manage those expectations, if we maxed that out, which is a bit of, would take some time, okay? You don't just exactly flip the switch and all of a sudden do that because, in particular, with those asset classes, they're amortizing, so they're paying down principal over time. It's like a bucket with a hole in it, and you have to keep filling it, which is fine. We, we fill it all the time. We're happy to fill it. I just want to, you know, express that it's not exactly something that would happen overnight, but over time, if, if it was even a 20% allocation, that picked up an extra, maybe 30 to 40 basis points is what we're, what we're kind of targeting in here. So, just, which is fine. I mean, every dollar counts. I, I totally get that. We spend, we spend all of our life on the, on the right-hand side of the decimal point, right? So, that's where we live, but I just want to make sure that it's, you know, a reasonable expectation.
And the fact that we're restricted by guidelines that doesn't even keep up with inflation, that drives me crazy. And so, I'd like to get as close as we could to not having the overall value in the big scheme of things going down each year that is sitting there.
Sure. I think that, I think one of the things, you know, it can be frustrating sometimes investing in public funds, and, and interestingly or not, I mean, California is actually one of the more progressive states vis-à-vis the alternatives that you have to work with. I work with, with lots of folks across the United States, some, some that can't buy any corporate exposure at all. I mean, just treasuries and agencies are what they work with for their whole portfolio. So, we have, we have flexibility here, and that's a really great thing.
What's our limitation on corporate exposure? Our limitation percentage on corporate exposure?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent. So, and I'm noticing that that 30% is far outperforming the treasury securities.
Yes.
I was having a discussion internally, and this is the last one, I'll let you all, discussion internally. Our managed accounts, we can invest in camp and life, and, and those I, I take by the fact that we're invested in them, liquid and, and safe. And overall, they're outperforming what our outside and handled accounts are doing, and I'm wondering, in the scheme of things, is there a benefit or detriment to moving everything just back in and use those two investment vehicles?
Well, I would, I would suggest that diversification is a beautiful thing, and that over different market conditions, life will outperform. In particular, what you're looking at is the impact of that inverted yield curve that we've had. But in a normally shaped environment where you get paid for taking on duration risk, then the term securities will outperform. And we were talking about that not too long ago, where we were able to show the value of those term securities. So, it's, it's, you know, that's why you diversify it. I mean, you just, you want to be able to participate in both, and you're not going to be able to call it perfectly to slip into the market and then pull out and go to cash and back and forth. It's just, it's just not going to work well for, for the city that way.
That's always a bad strategy, yeah, trying to time the market. I'm done for now, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. It was very easy to understand, so thank you for, for doing that. I know that you've been working with the city a long time, so you know, you, we kind of keep things very unchanging, let's say, and, which means that the city restricts certain investments that are allowable by California, still meeting the prudent investment standard, but we just don't do that, right? And so, you presented three different additional options, maybe thinking that the council wouldn't have an appetite to do anything different. So, if the council were to say, you know what, we actually have an appetite to do something different, would you have, would you even add more to these three options, or would these be the three options that you would say you would want us to look at?
I think those are the three options. There's, I mean, within state statute, those are the three that you have not yet taken advantage of.
And then, this is maybe to the city manager. If we were to say, let's, we want to look, at least look and examine and see if we want to do something different, how does that, how do we do that?
Well, you have the investment policy on the agenda this evening. So, either you can request staff to incorporate those changes into the investment policy as it is. If you would request that staff come back with additional information, you can do that. You have those options, and I don't know if Carolyn and Marvin would like to add anything, but...
Yes, the first step would be putting them in the policy. That would give us the ability via the policy to bring certain recommendations based on the appetite that you all have. So, I would consider the risks that the consultants described first and foremost, and if those risks are something that we are comfortable with, then we can proceed with bringing various recommendations that kind of fall within these parameters of whatever specific categories you would like us to pursue further.
Would you say it's better to be brought up under 9A or under this item here?
I would say that you have the investment policy as a discussion item coming back, actually later in this agenda. So, what I would recommend is that during that item, if there are additional changes or edits that you would like to see, either you can request those changes at this time, or you can request that staff make those additional changes and bring the policy back to you for reconsideration.
Yeah, and I would just say, just because of the way the agenda is set up, that this is only for advisory only. So, it would have to be on the 9A.
9A, okay. I'll hold till then, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
I think my questions have been answered, but I just want to be sure I'm, I'm crystal clear. The benchmarks, as you presented, was something that was set by a council sometime, some time ago. Is that correct? Is that, is that fair, fair to say, or is that an internal policy that was set?
The benchmark is set in the internal policy, which is set by council.
A little, okay. Yes and yes. So, there was some city council that at one time set that benchmark, and we're acting upon that, and so that's the discussion of whether we want to move from one-to-three year to one-to-five year potentially.
Yep. And I, I, may I just say one other thing? I, I think it's interesting and important to remember that programs evolve over time, okay? When we first started working with the City of Simi Valley, the portfolio was comprised of life and all agency callable bonds, okay? Not a treasury in the bucket, and there was no authority to buy corporates at that time. They were not authorized by policy. So, over time, the policy was revised, and then a little while after that, the comfort level was there, and we were able to recommend corporates. And it took a few more years to actually build out that exposure, but I just bring that forward because it's, it's a natural thing. I mean, these programs evolve over time. So, we're happy to work with you on that, and Insight is in a terrific position to assist you in these different asset classes in addition to the corporate exposure. I mean, we have very deep resources in credit analysis and can bring that to you for the betterment of the portfolio.
And I, I appreciate the historical contents, context you gave us of the performance over 10 years, et cetera, because sometimes that will cool people's jets, so I, I appreciate that. Let me, I just want to make sure I understand, your last list of the expanded list of eligible investments, which you, which you gave us as potential, the three classes, you said that that is held by the state to a 20% allocation? Is that what you said?
I said, I, I hope I said that code allows for up to 20% of the portfolio to be held in, in mortgages, mortgage-backed securities, and asset-backed securities.
Code, city code or state code?
State code.
State code, I want to be sure I was understanding. State code allows up to 20%?
Twenty percent.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Understood, okay, thank you, appreciate it. And what, and I'm sorry, now, if something changes in this discussion, we, we decide to go to one-to-five years, et cetera, these three areas, I, is it your discussion and decision to, or who makes that, do you, who makes that decision of that allocation? Is that...
The city makes that decision.
Okay, that's, okay. And then you execute based on the city, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just a, sort of a follow-up question down there. We talked about two different benchmarks, the one-to-three and three-to-five. Are there others that would have an even looser, higher benchmark?
Well, we, we were talking about the one-to-three is what you currently have, and then the one-to-five is an alternative. There's, there's always, there's always another alternative. I mean, you could look at like a three-to-five is just that longer piece of it. I just, you know, I just have to caution you guys that you get all of those assets out there on that part of the curve, and it can be volatile, okay? So, think back to when there were large unrealized losses in the portfolio, when interest rates were rising, you know, those are, those are challenging times, too. So, we just want to make sure that we're balancing everything out. You're balancing everything out, and we're executing.
Advice well made.
Thank you for going over that. I'm a banker, and so I tend to be very conservative when it comes to investments, and the way I look at it is, we are fiduciary of the taxpayer money, so we really have to take that into consideration. And if you look at, when you're younger, you put more risk out there, but the older you get, the less risk you want, and that's kind of where we have to be. We have to really monitor and watch the risk and make good decisions as to what we're going to do. I'm not saying not against it or for it, just good discussion. So, thank you for your information. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. During this agenda item four, the city council will hear public statements from the first ten persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first ten persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will speak during agenda item six, which is a continuation of agenda item four. Agenda items four and six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item four, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, we have 16 speaker cards, and unless you have any comments, I can begin calling the first ten.
Since there are 16, let's go ahead and do them all at the same time. Thank you.
I will call three names at a time so that you'll know who you'll follow. Jim McGillis, Allyn Eason, and Anthony Eason.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the city council, and staff. I'm Jim McGillis. I'm a resident of Simi Valley. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. As you know, I've spoken on the subject of short-term rentals and their illegality in our city. I got a little bit of feedback here. Although cities have made no formal recommendations for action in their August 4, 2025 memorandum, their summary stated, "Due to the limited number of citizen complaints which can be addressed using traditional neighborhood enforcement, an STR ordinance may not be necessary at this time." They also suggested a good neighbor policy for STRs. A quick search for short-term rentals will yield at least 100 illegal STRs in our city. They range from something called a barn to a unit sequestered behind two sets of locked gates. Is the barn legal for occupancy? Does the fire department have keys to the two sets of locked gates? The most humorous STR listing I could find was for a trailer, travel trailer. The owner would pull it to your street where you could have your guests stay next to the curb by your house. This is a serious matter with long-term implications for how Simi Valley will look and feel in the future. Does anyone in this room think that the good neighbor policy would be sufficient to stop the proliferation of non-compliant STRs in our city? Personally, I think not. Our volunteer organization has can-vest both homeowners and small businesses in Simi Valley. If you took a straw poll of the sentiments about short-term rentals, you would find almost 90% oppose STRs in Simi Valley. Currently, any residential property in the city can convert to STR status without notice. Before the council votes again on this issue, the public needs additional information. We need to know if anyone on the dais, including council members and staff, has a financial interest in any local rental property. The same should apply to any member of the Environmental Services Department. If so, said parties should recuse themselves from any further discussions, memoranda, or votes on this, on this subject. For residents to express themselves on this important subject, we have created a website at www.stopsstrs.com. That is S-T-O-P-S-T-R-S dot com. There, residents can add their name to the affiliate list, and soon, they can download resources to inform their neighbors regarding the ongoing threat that residential STRs represent to our city's lifestyle. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and council. My name is Allyn Eason, and I live in Simi Valley. Once again, I am here to speak on banning short-term rentals in Simi Valley. As you can see, a website has been created to educate and inform Simi Valley residents about the issue of short-term rentals, STRs, or as I like to refer to them as neighborhood motels in our city. That website is www.stopsstrs.com. I am urging anyone who is concerned about STRs in our neighborhood communities to visit the website. Also, please come to a city council meeting to voice your opinion. Although city council seems to think Simi residents do not care about the issue, they are mistaken. We have been going throughout the community and talking with people about their views. We are getting opinions of people we don't know by going to numerous shopping centers, farmers' markets, cops and cruisers event, walking various neighborhoods, and we have found that approximately 90% of Simi Valley residents do not want STRs in their neighborhoods. We found the majority of people who have used Airbnb or Verbal, they thought for a few seconds, and then they echoed what Mayor Kavanaugh said, which was, "I don't want to live next door to one." Many Simi residents we talked to were unaware that STRs existed in neighborhood communities. I shared my personal story of a short-term rental next door to me and explained that unfortunately, they might not know until one pops up right next to them. A year ago, I did not know that STRs existed in residential neighborhoods. I assumed they were illegal. Well, they are illegal in Simi Valley, but the city has decided not to enforce their municipal code. So, in closing, if you'd like to get more information, please visit the website, www.stopsstrs.com. We could use volunteers to help us protect our neighborhood communities and ban all residential short-term rentals in Simi Valley. And for any of you city council members who will be attending this month's neighborhood council meetings, we will see you there. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Anthony Eason. I am a 41-year resident of Simi Valley. I'm here tonight to speak about a couple topics. First and foremost, I am for a ban on residential short-term rentals in Simi Valley. Back on the council meeting of September 8, 2025, I asked all of you if you had asked your neighbors about how they feel about short-term rentals. This has given you four weeks to find the time to survey your neighbors as well as other residents of Simi Valley. When you get to agenda item 10A, I will be waiting with great interest for you to tell the public about the number of citizens you have surveyed and the input you have received about short-term rentals. I will be curious to see if your findings match all the people I will be curious to see if your findings match all the people I have surveyed and will continue to survey. Concerned residents of Simi Valley can go to www.stopsstrs.com and voice your feelings on the topic. Also, while surveying Roxbury Street, Poltergeist Track, I heard from some residents about concerns they have about Friday, October thirty-first Halloween. I believe that it might be appropriate for public safety reasons to have a more visible police presence in the neighborhood on that night. Second, I would like Item Three removed from the consent calendar and added as an Agenda Item for further discussion. I don't feel that the City Council should pass Policy A40, City Council Meeting Protocols, without bringing it as an Agenda Item to be openly discussed in an open public forum. Instead of making more citizen-friendly updates, it appears that the city is trying to implement a more restrictive policy. Some of your updates are in direct conflict with freedom of speech and expression. Revised sign regulations limiting dimensions to eight and a half by eleven inches is unrealistic and purposely restrictive to free speech and freedom of expression. I understand the limiting of poles or structures as those could be safety hazards. I believe as long as signs do not obstruct the view or access of others, they should be allowed. There should be a more realistic and less restrictive dimension. One of staff's comparative cities, Huntington Beach, has a restriction not to exceed eighteen by twenty-four inches. In staff's report, I see no comparative analysis being presented to the council. I see a staff recommendation to accept the policy they've written. Has the council seen the comparatives? The council should not just rubber stamp its approval on this proposed policy change without open public discussion and review. Thank you.
The next three speakers, John Lapper, Michael Shaw, and Carla Castillo.
Mayor and Council, this is an eight and a half by eleven sign. You could probably see it from this point, doubtful they can. Here we go, I got to figure this out because I had a two-minute speech and a three-minute speech, so hopefully I'll come up somewhere in between for that other policy that you're considering. To get a message across to our City Council on all that's happening on the agenda in Simi in, in three minutes is a tough enough challenge. Since you choose to have no town halls, do not respond to emails, and don't utilize social media to gain input from us, public comments is the big opportunity for you to listen to your constituents. Frankly, two minutes is minuscule amount of time for you to hear our concerns. Now with A40 meeting protocol, you also want to limit the size of our signs to a piece of paper, eight and a half by eleven, which would be a joke and a further infringement on our freedom of speech. This idea came out in the agenda on Thursday, and we really have no opportunity to have a discussion with you since there's no feedback from council and you don't answer emails. If you can't handle the people's signs, I'm asking you to at least allow the twenty by twenty-four inch minimum so that they are visible to you and the audience. Aside from two-minute comments, we have no voice with your current rules, no Zoom for people to call into, and you don't read the public estate, uh, public statements emailed. You are in essence silencing the public, the public. I might add, it is a handful of times a year that you have more than twenty speakers or any signs, and this is usually because of the City Council and staff's lack of communicating the important issues or policies to the residents. On a separate topic, I want to thank District Attorney Eric Nasserenko for filing felony hate crimes against the juveniles. And of note is that two of the juveniles committed a crime on May thirtieth, which apparently had, had no consequences until the August thirtieth attack by the same individuals. And one other thing is, I understand today that when we do do public statements and email them in, that they're not even sent to the council till four o'clock, which to me is absolutely atrocious and a waste because you guys can't even review them. So, I would think that you might look into a policy where we have a certain window to get them in, and you have ample opportunity to respond to the residents of Simi Valley. John Lapper, Simi Valley, thank you very much.
Good job. Mayor, Council, I'm glad to be here, talking to you all again. It was about a year ago that I was standing here and I was talking about, we, we're going to go into an election, we're putting up our signs, and I said, hey, let's have everybody play by the rules, let's try and get more inclusion with having people run. Not many people ran. DeeDee, Elaine ran unopposed. Fred had somebody run. And, well, what has happened the last year? And that's kind of what I want to ask you guys. I'm like, okay, the choice was, Michael, when Fred's passing, do you want to see what's best for Simi? Against DeeDee and Mike, that wasn't the best for the city. That was going to cost one point two million dollars. So, I backed down, and I said, okay, let's leave it to you guys to do it. Now, over the last year, I've been here in twenty-seven different topics I've brought up to this council, and I've been ignored twenty-seven different times. And it just hurts me. What really hurts me is, the last two months, we've seen our citizens come down here, and they're, they're coming to you for hope, they're coming to you for leadership, and what have they gotten? They've gotten the same thing I get. Oh, thanks for, thanks for talking, Mike. Thanks for coming. That's all. You guys had a chance with this, with this awful event, to talk against hatred, talk about, talk against racism. We should be calling for a, a, a big meeting with all the religious leaders, with the City Council, with schools, with parks, with all the students. Those kids, each one of them talked about, if you're not white, there's racism going on. And what happened? We ignored them. We sweep it under the carpet like it's not happening. And it's got to stop, you guys. Four of the five of you are up for election next, a, a, a year from this November. Start acting like the leaders that we voted for, and show us some, some direction, and of anything. Let's, let's talk against the hate and the racism that we heard about in our city schools. Can we please? All right, you guys. Oh, and with my last few minutes, you guys keep hearing me talk about Fourth of July. Fourth of July is coming, we got to order some fireworks, and we need some more money if you guys want to have a huge, giant gala. With that, I'll be quiet, and again, thanks for listening to me.
My name is Carla Castillo, been a resident here for over twenty-three years. Councilmembers, you don't need to tell us again that this item regarding ICE activity has been voted on, blah, 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 because here we are again. After weeks of telling us you would put it on the agenda, we've been demanding transparency for you to find some sense of morality and empathy. Does it really take months to admit publicly, and publicly denounce and discuss the terror our immigrant and Hispanic communities are experiencing? Mayor Kavanaugh, you said a few meetings back that you were embarrassed that we have racists in our city. So, where's that energy now when we need you to denounce the persecution of immigrants? Which is the racist agenda those people follow? Last meeting, you honored and celebrated the Hispanic and immigrant community in our city for Hispanic Heritage Month and the festival, but you adjourned the meeting in memory of a racist fascist who publicly and actively supported racist legislation and ICE activity? Those are the most hypocritical statements you could have made when your actions show the opposite. Let me tell you what these racist Kirk supporters you're supposedly embarrassed of do in our city. During our September eighteenth protest against ICE activity, multiple people from a counter protest tried to instigate violence by hurling insults until eventually assaulting multiple people. The police said they sit for hours to make sure no violence takes place during our protest, and they can protect everyone, but somehow, that individual walked away peacefully even after police interfered, and videos were shown to them. That's what they do. You can't make time to discuss our neighbors and community members being snatched off the streets. You can't make time to be informed about masked individuals reckless driving and crashing their vehicles into people's homes. And I'm looking at you, Elaine Lister. You can however, make time to talk about playing golf with the police department and what you have done the weeks prior to these meetings for longer than an hour. You make time to discuss how to limit our civil rights and freedom of speech. Shame on you for trying to sneak in a vote to update the City Council meeting protocol instead of discussing what you have already voted to add to the agenda. Trust me when I say we will be here, ready, empowered, and united when that day comes. I warn you that after what Freihoff did at the VC meeting last week and doubling down on ICE collaboration will have very negative consequences in our county and cities. If a public servant can tell the Board of Supervisors that he doesn't answer to anyone, that is dangerous, not just to, you know, certain people, but us that we're out there helping our community members who've been affected by ICE. And with the last few seconds I have, I just want to inform everyone that if you see any suspicious ICE activity, to call eight oh five two nine six one 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 nine, or eight oh five eight seven zero eight eight five five, because these are our streets. Who's streets?
Our streets!
The next three speakers, Chris Chestnut, Aleah Ewing, and Ruth Webenos.
Hello, my name is Chris Chestnut, resident of Simi Valley, unelected Mayor Kavanaugh. I've been coming in here asking you to take a side, and I want you to firmly stand with your Hispanic and Latino community during these troubling times. Two weeks ago, at the last City Council meeting, you started off great by bringing up here the two founders of the Cultural Arts Foundation, promoting the Hispanic Heritage Festival that weekend, as well as recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. We loved all of that. However, it appeared all very performative, and a lot of the good faith that you had built right there at the beginning of the last meeting had immediately become undone when at the very end of the same meeting, you chose to adjourn it in the, in the memory of Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk, a man who had said things such as immigration in the United States should be entirely stopped, as well as saying things as immigrants are destroying this country. And that's just the ti, the tiniest tip of the iceberg for the type of dangerous far-right ideology Kirk was known for spreading. And then you have the gall to still show up to the Hispanic Heritage Festival and act as if you still care about the city's diversity after going out of your way to align yourself with a person that is known for spewing fascist, white, nationalistic viewpoints against those very same people. Maybe Aleah was right a few weeks back when she came up here and said that you love their guacamole but hate the people that grow the avocados, because you say one thing but then come up here and do another. Alternatively, you could have adjourned the last meeting in memory of the nine eleven victims, or even a blanket statement in memory of all of those who have been affected by political violence. But no, you specifically chose Charlie Kirk to join the meeting in memory to, and that reveals a lot about you. If you want to know what we expect from a mayor of the people who stands firmly with her Latino community, then you can look no further than to Ventura's elected mayor, Dr. Jeanette Sanchez-Palacino, as an example. On the very same week at Ventura's City Council meeting, when the, when City Council member Jim Duran proposed to adjourn the meeting in memory of Charlie Kirk, Mayor Sanchez-Palacino declined. The mayor said, and I quote, "I cannot adjourn in memory to this individual who unfortunately is known for promoting divisive rhetoric and attacks on our vulnerable groups, and out of respect for the tradition of honoring those who uplift rather than divide, I will not be adjourning in his memory tonight." Make no mistake, what happened to Charlie Kirk was a dark reflection of an America none of us want. However, words matter. Pick better heroes. Do better.
I'm tired of telling you guys hello, so I'll just start. You have declared October Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Simi Valley, which is really interesting to me because almost exactly one year ago, my uncle, who's an alcoholic and multi-time convicted domestic abuser, committed attempted battery and assault again. He was drunk before the sun had even set and was following me around with a knife. As we tried to leave, he stabbed the car window right in front of me, twice. Of course, everyone that saw the video thought that he would be arrested, charged, and convicted since he was dumb enough to do it, knowing that I was recording the whole thing. But to our surprise, he was handcuffed in front of his apartment door for less than five minutes and then let go. He wasn't taken to jail, he wasn't forced to take a breathalyzer test for public intoxication, he wasn't charged with assault, he wasn't even charged with attempted assault. Instead, he was let go, where only a little while later, he would immediately break his restraining order and stab all four of my aunt's car's tires. We had to flee Simi Valley because our police department doesn't care about domestic violence. Are you not embarrassed? To be giving awards to community members who are doing more to fight domestic violence than the actual police officers who receive one out of our two tax dollars? Although, we shouldn't be surprised considering research shows that forty percent of police officers are domestic abusers themselves. Pigs will always defend pigs, won't they? One of my non-political friends heard I was coming to speak today and sent me the following message, "The SVPD are corrupt. They support criminals. My dad is abusive, been hitting us for many years, breaking things all the time, and they always let him get away with it." When I went to SVPD directly and asked them why they didn't take my uncle to jail, when he clearly violated the law and even admitted it to the officers, they said, and I quote, "It wasn't worth the drive." Your resident's safety wasn't worth two officers driving to Ventura to take a criminal and convicted felon back to jail. Sounds like your officers are getting very lazy, Steve Shorts. Did your SVPD team retreat to San Luis Obispo that cost Simi taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars make our officers even lazier than they already were? They're almost as lazy as our own City Council. Joseph, did you not say that you wanted to add the conversation about ICE to our agenda for tonight? Yet, I don't see it here. If doing your job is this difficult, I'm not sure this position is the right fit for you, especially considering that you weren't elected to begin with. You're all so drunk on what little power you have that you can't even seem to do the most basic requirements of your job. I saw an eighth grader tonight from Hillside doing more for our city than you. Make no mistake, the system isn't broken, it was built this way. And make no mistake, we will make sure that you will not be back here again next November.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm here to speak on several issues. I'm a twenty-four-year resident, you guys know that, former City Council member. First thing I want to talk about is all the patient SEIU members that have been standing in the back, very patiently. As my fellow union brothers and sisters, I support them, and I want to bring up that they are not getting their fair wages. And I'm just going to bring up two. Simi Valley Office Assistant, most salary is twenty-four forty-seven versus Thousand Oaks thirty-four seventy-three an hour. Maintenance Worker Level Three, thirty-one nineteen for Simi Valley versus forty-five forty-six an hour for Thousand Oaks. Look at the disparity. That's huge. These are our workers, these are our true public servants who actually serve us, who patch up our streets, who make sure that we are taken care of, who make sure that we have clean water, who make sure that we have clean sewage. They are the ones that take care of us. That means we, City Council members, we taxpayers, we want you to take care of our workers because they take care of us. So, give them their raise. They deserve it, and then some. We're going to keep losing workers. Second reason I am here is to invite you to a funeral. We're having a funeral tomorrow because tomorrow is hopefully, is probably the official death of the cleanup of the Santa Susana Field Lab, and I've yet to see one of you bother to show up at any of the Santa Susana Field Lab cleanup hearings. Boeing brought in sixty-six billion dollars in profit last year, but they want us, the residents of Simi Valley, to continue to get cancer like the over one hundred children that have already died of cancer. And as a cancer survivor, I'm here to fight on behalf of the residents of Simi Valley because we're tired of getting cancer, of seeing our family and friends die of cancer. Stand up. This is a softball. This is easy. Come and take a stand tomorrow, six PM, be there. Be there. Thirdly, the cost of immigration, of the cost of racism, according to the 2020 City Group, is $16 trillion since 2000. That's how much racism costs. Okay? Because I know I can't appeal to your sense of empathy and compassion, so I'm going to appeal to your pocketbooks. $16 trillion, that's how much it has cost. That's the result of discrimination in education, housing, and business loans for African Americans. How much is it costing our city when our reputation is down the drain, when we don't do anything to stand up? It is anti-bullying month, so I am asking you, if for no other month, for this month, that you stand up to the bullies that went and beat up Michael Robinson for no reason except for the color of his skin. I'm asking you to stand up to the bullies in our police department who are cooperating with ICE because they do not see me, a Mexican, as a human being. I am asking you to stand up and be the public servants that you or some of you elected to be.
The next three speakers, Amy Segar, Ronald Aruejo, and Ken Hurst.
Good evening, members of city council and Mayor Kavanaugh. My name is Amy Del Toro Segar, executive board member of SEIU 721, employee of Ventura County Superior Court for nearly 20 years now. I am here today to speak on behalf of my members, the hardworking men and women standing behind me right now. These are the people that keep the city of Simi Valley running, the ones that keep the sewage from backing up, the ones that keep your water drinkable. They keep buses running on time, they maintain your streets, your trees, take your 911 calls, support the police department, and keep businesses flowing through City Hall right next door. The members of SEIU 721 here in the city of Simi Valley have now worked without a contract for 97 days. The city's bargaining team has slow-walked us to a point where my union brothers and sisters stood up for themselves and decided that an unfair labor practice strike vote was necessary to remind the city of Simi Valley's, our members must be taken seriously and that the city cannot bargain in bad faith anymore. I am happy to announce the strike vote passed with a 99% yes vote. We are here to remind you that you have the authority to do something about this. We demand you give the city's bargaining team the ability to make a deal that will allow my union brothers and sisters the ability to live in the city they work for. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Mayor Protem Judge, council members, staff, and the public. My name is Ronald Aruejo, visiting from Oxnard, and I'm speaking as one of the board members of the Filipino-American Council of Ventura County, inviting you and all residents to the Filipino-American Fiesta to be held at the Ventura County Museum later this month on Sunday, October 19. Since its inception in 1987, the council has played a pivotal role in fostering communication among member organizations, serving as a central hub for coordination and representation. Committed to promoting harmony and understanding within the Filipino-American community in Ventura County, the council is dedicated to encouraging active participation in various spheres of community life, including civic, economic, cultural, social, and charitable programs. The council is the umbrella organization for 13 Filipino-American clubs, championing the engagement of member organizations in projects aimed at enhancing the general well-being of the community, thereby ensuring its continued growth and prosperity and serving as a cornerstone of Filipino-American identity and representation in Ventura County. The Fiesta is a free event to celebrate culture and community. It will be a vibrant afternoon filled with inspiring speakers, traditional Filipino dance performances, and delicious snacks. Discover the rich history and diverse stories of Filipino-Americans through music, art, and conversation. In honor of Filipino-American History Month in this month of October, it is the first time that the Museum of Ventura County will host this event to bring the history of the past for us to learn in the present and to act positively in the future. The council invites you to learn more at the Fiesta on Sunday, October 19, at the Ventura County Museum. I'll be passing out some handouts at the event to the city clerk to pass along to you all. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ken Hurst. I live in Simi Valley. First of all, I was very glad to see a motion passed last month to establish a forum to engage with the issue of the behavior of ICE in Simi Valley. I was hoping that tonight we would see more progress on this. I look forward to the kickoff, and I'm curious to know what is the holdup. I thought we're going to be talking about it today. Secondly, there's a, I understand there's a move afoot to limit the size of the signs that we can have to eight and a half by 11 inches. I would note that none of the signs here, well, maybe there's one, I suppose, that's eight and a half by 11. You can't get much across an eight and a half by 11, and it's not necessary to have it that small. What you have says that signs are permitted, provided they do not block the view of the meeting of other attendees or otherwise disrupt the meeting. That seems fine to me. You don't need more than that. Thirdly, I was appalled that the last council meeting was adjourned, not in the name of political violence, but in the memory of Charlie Kirk, a purveyor of bad faith arguments and racism. That was really disappointing. Thank you very much.
The next speakers, Sarah Wicksuski, Jamie Sanchez, and Stephanie Bunker.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, city council, and city staff. I'm going to keep this short and ask for your focus for just a few moments. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Ayala for his courage and leadership calling for an immigration forum. This is the first step in protecting those targeted by ICE's terroristic practices, and I will keep coming back until protecting our immigrant neighbors is on the agenda. Next, I want to talk about how engaged and energetic the community is here. I have been to a lot of local government meetings recently, across the county, and the ones here at Simi Valley are the most passionate and energized ones that I have been to. It is not easy to get people passionate about local government, but look at this turnout. Simi Valley cares about its community, so please, do not crush that spirit. Do not pass Consent Calendar Item 3, Updates to Policy 840. Let the passion of this beautiful city shine through. Thank you.
Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Chu-Mash people who have cared for and protected this land for generations. It's important that we continue to honor and respect their history and ongoing presence in our community. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jamie Sanchez. I have spoken here quite a few times. Some of what I say today, you may have already heard, but at least you'll remember who I am. October is a special month for me, not just because it's my birthday month, but because it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to thank City Councilmember Ayala for mentioning it last meeting. As I look back at previous years, the city has never formally mentioned it, acknowledged it in any way. It means a great deal to see at least one issue being heard. But let's not dismiss those silent survivors who still have had, have not had the justice they deserve. I not only served my country as a Navy veteran, but I also lived a double life, enduring domestic violence behind closed doors. I escaped a violent relationship while caring for two young children, a relationship that I had, if I hadn't left, could have cost me my life. If not by his hands, probably by my own. I left in the middle of the night, traveling from San Diego to Simi Valley, and I came back to this community because I've always been drawn here. Too many of us live in silence, struggling with abuse that brings shame, fear, and embarrassment. But courage is not the absence of fear. It's taking action in spite of it. Today, I'm here as a vic, not as a victim, but as a survivor and as an advocate. I currently serve as a secretary for the 82 Men Club, the event coordinator for the Veterans' Resource Club, and a member of the Latinx Club at Moore Park College. I chose to be involved as possible, to be part of the solution instead of part of the problem. Through my work and lived experience, I've seen how many important, how important it is to address difficult issues, from domestic violence and suicide prevention to the effects of ICE on families and the ongoing justice for Michael Robinson. In his words, "I will be the last." Remember, Mr. Judge, just because he is an 18-year-old young black adult does not mean there should be any leniency for entitled, immature, 16- and 17-year-old white juveniles who clearly have witnessed and learned racial discrimination from the home. Parents, we need to do better. I urge the city council member, members to place on the agenda a discussion about formally forming a committee dedicated to supporting undocumented community members as other cities have done. We have continued to hear about making space on the agenda, and nothing has been moved forward. Also, what happened to the community market? Another issue that has not been talked about. I'm running out of time, but thank you so much.
Good evening, city council. I just wanted to say that I stand in solidarity with Local 721 for fair working wages, living wages. I also wanted to say that immigrants migrate for a multitude of reasons. If Trump, ICE, or the city council actually cared about humanity, you would look at the economic systems in place that drive and fuel migration. The U.S. is the number-one exporter of weapons, helping fuel endless wars and violence in other countries. This, along with tax deductions for multinational corporations, are what drive poverty in people to flee so that their families may have an opportunity to survive and prosper. This administration's fuel of hate and anger creates a dangerous environment for all community members, and I hope that you take this opportunity to do something about it.
The last speaker, Ashley Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm saddened to see there's no, there's still no agenda item as it relates to ICE and steps you can take to protect your people. I try to hold faith that at least Ayala will continue to push to reconcile this issue as soon as possible, but you all need to step it up. To those that may be delaying, I understand there may be previous issues that required your attention, and it wouldn't be added right away, but I'd like to remind you that this particular issue means people's lives. Not housing delays, not trash in the streets, not fiber optic installations, but saving people's lives, giving them hope, being the reason they can put food on their table even after their spouse or parent was detained or deported, proving to them you care that a child could have been injured or killed when erratic ICE-driving landed a car in their kitchen, giving them courage to return to work or just leave their homes, making them feel like more than some guacamole tasting at a Hispanic Heritage Festival, restoring some faith in local law enforcement, restoring their faith in you. The longer you sit on this issue, the worse it gets for everyone. If you're hoping we'll lose interest or steam, you'd be incorrect. The people are powerful, and although many are too scared to be seen or heard, they exist. They will be known, and they will only stomach the pain for so long. Desperation can be detrimental. The people in your care are unhappy, and I know none of you want unhappy constituents. Remember, your inaction speaks just as loudly as your lack of support, and as someone who has spoken to hundreds of business owners and employees in your city, I kindly urge you to really get the ball rolling. Additionally, we already don't feel heard, so your attempt to further silence your constituents with Agenda Item 3 is a slap in the face. Some of you use your seats to avoid all the tough topics and instead spread, even encourage, hate and bring our city nothing but shame. If you cannot and will not do the work you are elected to do, what purpose do you serve? We do not need your empty promises. We need people of action. Please, take action or step down and let someone capable do the work. And finally, support the union workers. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements. Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for everyone that came out to speak. In regards to the agenda item that people were talking about, we are pulling that agenda item, and we're going to have a discussion about it, so don't just speak and leave. Hang out and listen, and I think that you'll, you'll be pleased at the discussion. Let's see, Ronald on the Filipino-American Fiesta. I think all of us on the city council went to the local one here, and if I'm in town, I'd be happy to come. I think that that community is awesome, and you still here? Ah, got it. There you are. Hi. And so I hope to, I hope to come and meet you out there. The subject of ICE on the agenda, I know that it was coming before us, and there was some discussion and some new laws just recently passed in Sacramento and making that a problematic thing for us to understand what the city's role can and cannot be, and so that item didn't make it to tonight's agenda, but it is not. And that is all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. One of my comments was going to be that I know all of us have some discussion that we want to make on that Consent Calendar Item 3, and so I know several of you referenced that, and just because it was a consent calendar doesn't mean we won't discuss it because there is a lot of concern, I think, on this body to make sure we get it right because, of course, this is a participatory forum. I wanted to thank Jamie Sanchez. Thank you. She's here. There you are. Bless your heart. Sorry. Thank you for sharing your survivor story. That's not easy to do in a public forum, but it's so critical and important, particularly this month, and I just want to thank you for the work that you do and for representing and coming and sharing tonight. Thank you very much. I had other thoughts. Mr. Lapper, I don't disagree that statements, we welcome input, written, spoken, et cetera, and I would certainly be supportive of receiving those public statements as soon as they are submitted. I know that's a huge burden on our, our city clerk, but nonetheless, it's a conversation to be had because I concur that we want the information as soon as we can get it. Mr. Shaw, I don't believe we've ignored 27 topics. You and I have discussed many of them, and I don't think, just because it's not agendized doesn't mean it's being ignored. I want to be very clear. And one, and so, and we can discuss further, some of the developments, because there are many things that you bring before us, and we appreciate that. It is interesting, I would, one thing I'm going to conclude with, I believe it was, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Shaw or Mr. Lapper who said, who, or maybe Mr. Shaw, who talked about actions that we should be taking against hatred, racism, et cetera, and maybe not doing enough. I think several of you have referenced that. It's interesting that when we do things, it, people feel different things should be done. For instance, there was a beautiful peace gathering that was held. There was a meeting held at a church. Just yesterday, there was a conversation at a church that participants on this diocese were part of. Youth Council, which two of us are members of, we are actively engaged with them. So I want to be very clear, there are things that are happening. It may or may not be that huge forum that you think will solve the problem. It is a delicate, difficult conversation, but I want you to know that we are all willing to engage and want to engage and want this community to be the best it can be, and so I just wanted to share that insight. So, thank you. That concludes my thoughts. That concludes my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, for the short-term rentals, I just—often, you come to speak every week, and then you leave, and so this is the first time you're actually here to hear our public comments, so when you're gone, then I don't want to respond because you won't be here to hear it. But what I want to say is, you need to keep speaking and giving ideas, because your ideas are shaping what policy can be. So, for example, Mr. Eason, at your last—the last meeting, you talked about the tiered TOT based on bedrooms. That's a good thing for us to take into consideration as we're building this out. Mr. McGillis, you talked today about barns and trailers. As we're building out a policy, we need to know. We need to make sure that people understand what an STR is and is not, right? So there are things that you are saying that we are all listening to, and I just want you to know that. It's not just going in one way and out the other. I also want you to—to be very clear to—to—and respond to your—to your—to your comment or question. I do ask people about what they think of STRs, all—the along with every other issue. I was at a meeting the other day, there was a realtor sitting next to me, and I said, "What do you think about the housing that they're thinking about going up, you know, in the town center? How would that affect?" I was—I'm part of leadership Simi Valley. I was on the bus rider, turned around to the person behind me and said, "What do you think about the STRs?" And I just ask open-ended questions. So I just want to respond to you that, yes, that is part of something that I think we do all the time, is to talk to people and understand, and I always lead it with an open-ended question without leading them to an answer, because I just want to hear it. So I just want you to know that I'm hearing everything you're saying, and I'm—it's all going right here, and we have to come—it's going to come back to the council, and we'll —we'll figure it out. Mr. Lapper, we'll talk—as Councilmember Rhodes said, we're going to pull that agenda item, so we'll have more discussion about the meeting protocol and be able to address some of those things you said. In regards to the immigration discussion and the—I think one of the things I said is that we would—when we're going to agendize something, it doesn't mean it's going to be on the next week's agenda or the two weeks' agenda. It means it's going to be there, and so it will be there, okay? So just know that—it—that it's coming, not necessarily for the—for this specific meeting. I didn't ask for it to be placed in the—on the agenda in June. I just placed—it was just at a recent meeting. For the SEIU, we know that we have to make decisions that make the city work, but we also know that the workers—we need the workers to run the city, right? And so it's a delicate balance, but we're going to—we will get to something that we can all agree on and be able to work together, because it—it benefits none of us if we don't work together to find a resolution for that. And to Ms. Sanchez, you're bringing up the domestic violence at the previous meeting. I don't know if we've had domestic violence prevention, but if we have not, you have just—it's through your idea that we now have set a precedence for all future years going. So thank you for bringing that up. It's a really good example of someone coming to the council, making a suggestion, where we hear it, and we actually implement it and make it work. So thank you and for being brave to tell your story. And with the community market, what can we share with them?
I'll get an update from staff, but the most recent update I had was that staff had reached out to the organizers of the community market and that we had not received a response. However, I don't know if that is the most accurate, up-to-date information at this time. I'm looking for Stratus, and I'm not seeing Stratus. Do you have an update that you can share?
Regarding the community market at the Crunch Fitness, we have been in contact with the operators. There is a permitting path forward for the applicants. They just need to follow up with staff to submit the required information, and as soon as we get that from them, we'd be happy to process it and get it up and running again.
Nothing else? All right, thank you. Again, thank you, all these speakers. You don't—sometimes you say things that are hard to hear, but we're supposed to hear them when we're listening, and it's the only way we can get anything done. So I appreciate all the comments, whether they're pro or anti what I do, what any of us do, but thank you for being here. Thank you for being passionate. That is important to the community, and I am proud of our community for doing that. I know one of the ladies here said that. We are also trying to do our best for our—our union workers, so be a little more patient with that. We're working on stuff, and—Michael, we'll make sure at least one thing gets done, if that's the way—you know, I mean, I promise you that. And—and again, on Item 3 with the signs, I—I agree. The minute I saw the eight—eight by 12, I went, "Wait, that's—or eight and a half by 11, that's a sheet of paper. It's not quite—"We've got some signs here. They're fine. You know, they're not being obstructive or anything, so we'll be discussing that when we pull that item. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony and public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda, that the record show that due notice was given as required by law and an affidavit to its effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which the car was submitted to speak for this public testimony, Item 5, for a period of more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Agenda Item 5A, a continued public hearing to consider a request from Runkel Canyon LLC for an amendment to the Runkel Canyon Development Agreement DA-2025-0001, DA-04-01, AMD Number 5, to allow a three-year time extension with a potential two-year option for the Runkel Canyon Woodlands Project located at the southern terminuses of Sequoia, Talbot, Watson, and Comet Avenues, and High Point Place and Hazelnut Court, and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1364, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving a fifth amendment to develop—to development agreement, Number DA-04-01, between the City of Simi Valley and Runkel Canyon LLC, and Assistant City Manager Luis Garabai is here to present this item.
Good eve—
Before we begin, are there any expedite communications to report? Seeing none, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, for your consideration, is a time extension for Development Agreement 2025-001 between the City of Simi Valley and Runkel Canyon LLC. Based on the direction that City Council provided at the July 21 City Council meeting, staff met with the Runkel team to incorporate and clarify the terms of the proposed agreement. What's being presented tonight is a three-year extension with a two-year option if certain milestones are met. These milestones, which were outlined in the staff report and as an attachment, include a combination of both hard and soft deadlines that include plan submittals, permit issuance, building and site inspections, and construction completion dates, which will help ensure that all three major components of the project that's remaining, which is the four estate lots, a planned development for the 21 estate lots, and then also the senior units and recreation center, all move forward concurrently and ultimately get built. If a hard milestone is not met, then it would trigger a—an accelerated payment of the housing in Luffy that's currently owed to the city, plus it also gives the city the ability to forego the additional two-year option that is being presented. Three, just additional quick changes worth highlighting. First, based on the—the input provided, the developer is going to be providing quarterly updates to the City Council at—it's future City Council meetings, so you make sure you can keep track of the progress of the projects as it moves forward. Second, there is a monthly coordination meeting internally with staff and their development teams also to make sure that we're shepherding the projects and helping those move forward. And then third, is that staff's now doing an in-person initial review of all the submittals that are tied to this project. So this not only helps cut response time, but also it provides and identifies in real time any items that are missing that prevent it from having a complete submittal. What that does is that ensures that the applications are reviewed in a timely manner, and again, it reduces the number of re-submittals that are done, which often delay the ultimate review and approvals of the project. So with that, this includes the—the presentation part. Staff is available to answer any questions. There's also representatives from the Runkel team available as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The three-year, two-year scenario, it's been asked of me that because there's been false starts and elongated timeframes and mispromises in the past, is there any advantage to going to a two-year with a three-year extension?
I think the way the development timeline works for the different components of the project, you're not going to see a lot done in that initial two-year project—progress project. Again, with the hard milestones in place, if there's an issue that's identified in the first six months or the first year, then it automatically gives us an opportunity to revisit and say, "Hey, you missed that hard milestone that we all both agreed upon. Then let's either sit down and renegotiate a new deal, or guess what? You're not going to get the—the two-year extension."
And I also heard you discuss the in-person submittals, and having listened to the he-said, she-said, the things that have happened over the years, I think this is great, because now both parties are held accountable. The city for being responsive to submittals and submittals being complete when—they're in, and so I—I applaud that part of this. That combined with the quarterly updates should finally actually move this thing along, and I think that's what everybody wants.
Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. To piggyback on what Councilmember Rhodes said, the regular check-ins and the clear milestones with payments, I think are the two things that are going to continue to keep this going forward. Can you just summarize, at the end of year three, what will actually be built, possibly going to be lived in, et cetera?
Well, not possibly. Hopefully—it'll be there.
Hopefully, yeah, meaning people living there.
By the end of the three years, there's—for the estate lots should be completed and done, 16 of the planned development lots, and also Phase 1 of the senior units would also be completed.
Okay, so that's mostly all of it.
It's a big portion, and essentially, the last two years allows the developer to complete out the construction for the remainder of the project, which would be lots 17 through 21, and then Phase 2 of the senior projects and rec facility.
And then with—between the quarterly updates, what do you have in place to ensure that everyone's staying on track to get to that quarterly update?
As I mentioned, we are going to be having internal staff meetings, our development—our development team with the Runkel Development Team on—a monthly basis to make sure that we're addressing any issues that—that come up, and anything that's missing or outstanding can be—can be addressed and identified early on in the process.
The—thank you. The—see—the Phase 1, the—the completion of the senior Phase 1, what is that? Do we know what that's going to include?
So we wanted to give the developer some flexibility in terms of how that project is phased. You know, again, there's a lot of variables involved in how that builds out, so we—we left it more general, so it will—more than likely, just from a financial standpoint, i—it's not going to be just one building. It's going to—it's 26 total buildings as part of the 120-something condos, senior condos, so they're—they're going to phase it in a way that makes sense, and obviously, that's going to be part of our ongoing discussions as we get closer to that.
So the plan would be, though, that it's actual units—
Yes.
—being built there?
Yes.
And I just have two more questions, I thi—oh, on the tracking sheet itself that we're going to be tracking these items on, I think it's important that we're going to have to work together to make this happen, right? The city as well as the developer. So I—even though some of the items are very clear, can we add another, like, column that says owner, so we know who's actually responsible for each of those items, and then we can hold ourselves accountable, we can help hold the developer accountable, and we can just make sure that everyone is on track?
Absolutely, and—and obviously, the city's fully committed to help shepherd and make sure that this project is completed. I know the development team is—is fully committed to doing that as well, and we'd be happy to add an additional column, and then any other feedback provided by council. Again, either council will be able to provide directly during these quarterly updates, or again, please share with staff, and we're happy to relay that message.
Then the final question is, what happens at the end of three years if it doesn't fall—if things are not where they should be?
It—I guess it just depends on how far along they are with their—with their project. I think what happens is, it gives us an opportunity to now open up the development agreement. Financially, it makes—it—there's a—a big financial incentive for them to continue going and meeting these milestones. I think it's—council has been made—has made it very clear, at least to staff, that, "Hey, there's no more chances after this." So—
Yeah.
—it would have to be an extreme, like, some—
Yeah. And that's what I wanted to kind of end on, is the expectation, right, is that the—even if they get the two-year extension, at the end of that two-year extension, everything should be completed. There should be no other requests for extension after that, right?
Yes, that's the goal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
I think that Councilmember Ayala may have just asked all my questions, but I—but—which is good, which is good, but let me just maybe make sure that—I just tweak one of them. And I'm very appreciative that this appears to be accountability on both sides. It's not fair just to say it's the developer, it's the city. It's got to be both, and so I'm appreciative of that. Appreciative of the fact that there will be quarterly updates. That is provided by the developer, as I understand it.
Yes.
Will the city—and my—as I was reading that, I thought, "Well, they can say, 'We're working along on this, but the city's failed to give us X, Y, and Z.'" And so I guess my question is, will the city be participating in that quarterly update?
Well, the quarterly update is going to happen in this—at this meeting. The monthly meetings will be involved, and Sam has appointed me to be attending all these meetings, so I—I will be at—at all of those, so we'll definitely—
And to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
So it's not just going to be the developer, it's going to be city staff. I can tell you that my office has been intimately involved in it, with Call Burger, working with Luis, as well as the developer—
Okay.
—to—to help come up with this plan, based on what council—the direction that you gave last time, and so, yeah, these will be at council meetings, staff will be presented also.
Got it. Okay, and I—and—and it seems very well-crafted, so if I understand it correctly, the first hard—hard milestone, if I—I need to look again, end of July, so we're looking 10 months from now. Is that—is that pretty accurate?
July 31st.
July 31st, I think that is, so that's—that's Councilmember Ayala's birthday. He—he appreciates that celebration. So, okay, just—I'm making sure I understand the context, but—but thank you for developing this. Appreciate both sides for being so committed.
We can give him a hard hat, so he can go out and physically be at the inspection as well.
All right. At this time, I would like to open the hearing. Does the applicant wish to be heard on this matter?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jordan Ferguson, representing Runkel Canyon. Just wanted to say, we've really appreciated working with staff, really appreciated working with the city attorney's office. We think we're there on a plan that's going to get this project done, and so we're just really excited about getting the—the bomb moving forward and happy to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise, just really looking forward to actually getting this project completed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council or the applicant? Seeing none, you're good. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this matter?
Yes, Mayor Kavanaugh, we have four speaker cards. The first one, Ruth Webenos.
I remember discussing this when I was on the dais many years ago, and I can't believe we're still looking at it now. I—I have no faith in this developer. I know one thing. I know costs never go down. I know that 40% of all construction workers in the state of California are immigrants, and we know that they're not going to be around, especially given that they don't feel safe in the city. So I know that price of labor is not going to go down. I know that because of all the tariffs, I know that the price—the cost of materials is not going to go down. I know that developers care about making money. If they cared about this community, they would have built a senior center, they would have started building these homes, as they promised the residents of Simi Valley that they would do. So I would like—if you're going to move forward—I'm—I'm against this. I don't think Runkel Canyon should get an extension, to be honest with you. I think you should give someone else a shot at it, someone who actually cares about our community. But if this is how you're going to vote, like I said, if I— But if this is how you're going to vote, like I said, if I were up there, I'd vote against it. But if this is how you're going to vote, then I want those quarterly meetings to make sure that that is shared with the public at city council meetings. They have a right to know. They've been waiting for years and years and years for the senior center, paying HOA dues, they've been waiting for construction of streets. It's, you know, they, they have every right to get what they were promised by this developer, which has broken promises time and time and time and time and time again. And I'm really, really tired of seeing this city council, you know, play favorites. It's really sickening to hear you guys talk about how you're going to babysit the developer, and you're going to use our taxpayer money and our taxpayer, you know, funded personnel from the city of Simi Valley to babysit the developer. That's not our job. It's not, that's not where my taxpayer money should be going to babysit the developer. They know what they have to do. They know what they have to do, and they should be doing it. And you shouldn't have to hold their hand. Okay? When I have a student who's behind in homework, they do their homework, and then they come and ask for more work, they do their homework, they come and ask for more work. I am sure that if they're actually on task doing the things that they're supposed to, building the senior center, building out the senior condos, building the roads, building the infrastructure, that you're not going to have to be checked up on. So I appreciate the sentiment, Councilmember Littler. I do, I really do. But that's not something that I want my taxpayer money to be going to babysitting a developer when they know what they need to do. And if they can't do it, then give another developer a shot at it who's actually going to follow through. Thank you.
Sorry, I have an additional thing. Good afternoon, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council. I am Ivana Christman. I have to say that I'm also a planning commissioner in Simi Valley. However, tonight here, I am only representing myself as a homeowner and resident in the Woodlands community. I did recuse myself from the meeting at my planning commission. I want to begin by acknowledging that the proposed agreement with its clear milestones and penalties is a significant step in the right direction. We appreciate the city's effort to create accountability. However, I am here today to ask you for a small but critical change to that agreement. I'm asking you to amend the extension from a three-year term with a two-year option to a two-year term with a three-year option. This change does not alter the project's substance in any way, but it purely, it's purely a measure to provide additional protection and resources to the homeowners, your constituents, who have been waiting for this project completion for over a decade. We understand the purpose of the balloon payment, or whatever you call it, liquidated damages. The developer must pay the city if they miss a hard line. While it is good for the city to have this protection, that money does not do anything for the homeowners. Those homeowners are the ones financially compensating for the developer's lack of performance for the past 10 years. A two-year initial term, as was originally recommended by the planning commission, after hearing from the community, after years of unfulfilled promises and absolutely no construction, even for the past two months, that we've been promised that the plans are in plan check, they're still in plan check. Two-year is not unreasonable. If the developer performs, as we all hope they will, this change means absolutely nothing to them. They will meet their benchmarks and earn the subsequent three-year, three-year extension. But for us, it provides the reassurance that the city will be formally reevaluating this project's viability in two years, not three. I will remind you that you are here to serve the constituents, not the builder. If they don't perform for two years, we will not be locked in to wait for an additional year to be here like we were three years ago. I'm only asking you for a simple change to the timeline of accountability. Please put the reassurance of your constituents first and amend this proposal to two-year extension with a three-year extension. And I do agree with past Councilmember Lou Lewvenos that we should not be babysitting them, but I would gladly take upon that role to babysit them. Thank you for your time and for your opportunity to speak at this meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Al Alvarez. I had been living in the, at the Woodlands community since 2018. We were one of the first families to move into the development. So I've been in front of you, and I've been listening to these extensions for quite a few years. I do want to see this project finished, but I want to see it finished as soon as possible. Looking at the timetable that we've been given, the first phase of the senior center would not be completed until June 30th of 2028. That's three years from now. That's way too long. There's no reason, no reason, that Phase One of that senior center, or the senior units, cannot be completed in a two-year period. So I would ask you to consider giving the builder a two-year extension with a three-year option if they meet their requirements in the first two years. And I would like to see the first phase of the senior units completed in two years. There's no reason why that cannot be done. And then just one more thing that I'll say real quick. Every time that we come up for an extension, the developer comes up here and says, we understand how frustrated the homeowners are. We know, we know how frustrated you are. Year after year after year. Well, maybe, you know, actions speak louder than words. So I'll bring this up. Maybe one of you can ask the developer this question. Are you willing to do something to show good faith to the homeowners? Are you willing to give them something for all the inconvenience that you have caused and will be costing for the next three, five years? Here's an example. They built a park, a homeowner's park, years ago. The park's got a playground. Playground cannot be used in the summer because they didn't put a cover on it, and the slides and so on and so forth get so hot that the kids kept playing. Maybe they want to pay for the cover on that and show a little goodwill. Actions speak louder than words. That's all I've got to say, and thank you so much for your time.
And here we are again. First, I want to thank you for your continued, well, first, good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of the City Council. I want to thank you for your continued patience and commitment as we work through the ongoing extensions concerning KB Runkel Canyon Development. My name is Doreen Stoutland, and I've been the homeowner in the Woodlands since 2016 and served on the board for seven and a half years. I pretty much know the development. Tonight, I respectfully recommend that the City Council amend the current extension agreement from a three-year term with a two-year option to a two-year term with a three-year option. Since 2016, and particularly since extensions began in 2019 for the senior center, KB has made promises after promises to both the city and the community, yet delivered no tangible results. There's been no progress, no visible effort towards construction, only a steady stream of excuses. This proposed change will not alter the scope or nature of the project. However, it would send a clear message that the city is prioritizing and protecting the interests of its residents and their communities above all. Some of you have had the opportunity to walk the community and have seen firsthand why so many homeowners remain concerned, not only about the development itself, but about the implications of granting further long-term extensions. At one point, I was going to say at this that thank you for your time and consideration, but I would like you, the City Council, to ask Nick or the KB representative, where's KB and the submittal plans for the four estate lots? As they have stated two months ago, they were close to being submitted. So where are they? What stage are we at? Are these four lot, four estate lots models for the future 21 estate lots? Because they have a habit of building models and not building more until they sell. And then please, please also remember, our development has lost HOA income for the past six to nine years because they haven't developed. Thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, that was the last public testimony speaker card. Thank you. Does staff desire to respond to any comments or issues raised?
Sure, Mayor Kavanaugh. Just for the first speaker, and maybe I wasn't clear when I said this during the presentation, but those quarterly update meetings are going to be in the public forum at city council meetings. So every, again, we heard the transparency. We wanted to have these conversations out in the open, so that was something that, so I apologize if I didn't make that clear enough. Second, as part of the development agreement, the developer is actually reimbursing the city for all of its staff and attorney costs associated with the project management. So again, there is no additional cost to the taxpayers for that time that we're going to be spending, work, helping them work that through that project. And then I think just in regarding the timeline itself, just please remember that we, we wanted to be flexible and reasonable in terms of some of these, these dates are really outside dates. They very well could be completed before the outside date, but we wanted to make sure we provided them enough time, depending on other things that are happening, to make sure they completed. So just note that these are outside dates, and, you know, much like, I won't use that analogy, but yeah.
All right, thank you. Does the applicant desire any rebuttal?
Just a few things that we'd like to make clear. First off, you know, we hear what everyone is saying, and accountability and transparency, those are, those are sort of buzzwords that we've been thrown out before, and will probably be thrown out again. What we've tried to build in here is something that's actually actionable, that the city council is going to be seeing us every three months in a public hearing, with staff to come forward and say, here's the progress that's being made, here are issues that we're having. Instead of pointing fingers back and forth, and I know that's happened on both sides in this project in the past, we're hoping to be able to have a public conversation saying, here's the progress that we're making. So that's the goal here. With respect to the request to change the timeline, at a certain level, you know, development takes the amount of time that it takes. We've built in these hard milestones here with the idea that if we, if these deadlines are missed, there are consequences. There are financial consequences to the developer, there are extension consequences to the developer. And so we've built in these timelines to hopefully be realistic, but also to say, look, there will be consequences to Runkel Canyon if these things are not done. And so the hope is that we have built a realistic timeline here. The reason that we've gone with the three-year, two-year, as staff has said, is the idea that we want to show substantial progress. We don't want to be back here in two years saying, we got a little bit done. We want to be back here in three years saying, look at how much we've gotten done, so that the public can say, yeah, we understand why we're moving forward to finish this project in the five-year timeline. So that's, that's the thinking behind the three-year, two-year, and we really do think that the progress is going to be much more substantial with that additional year in the initial term. So that was, that was the idea behind it. Happy to answer any other questions you may have, but otherwise, we'll just reiterate our commitment to getting this project done and to being here regularly to tell you how it's going. And hopefully, every time I show up, I'll be telling you, here's what we've gotten done, here's what we've gotten done, so that we can have a nice conversation about how the project is actually going to be finished on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I just had to confirm. So I do have questions on from the dais. Mayor Protem Judge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am more inclined to agree with Councilmember Rhodes' first point that he brought up and the homeowners in the, in the area brought up. We should move the timeline from two years with a three-year extension instead of the three and two. I just believe that we've been playing with this for too long, and it needs to get, we need to have it moved faster. So I'd rather see that moved like that. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you. Actually, I wanted a little, maybe this is a question for the developer. I, one of the questions that was raised in public comments, which is, I think, a valid question, is, is the timeline for getting to the actual senior condo development, that that is, appears that that first phase is three years out. And I guess my question, I would like you to address why that isn't sooner in the process, why that, why the senior development is three years out. And then secondly, as I read the hard deadline, it is building permits for senior units Phase One final. Maybe I'm not understanding the terminology. Building permits, in my mind, means that, that they're okay to build. I'm not quite understanding that means that that means they are actually built. Am I understanding what that means? Am I misunderstanding what that means?
Yeah, on page three of the staff report, there's a terminology in that clarifies that for the city of Simi Valley, when we refer to something as having the building permits finalized, it means that the construction has been completed and ready for...
You're right. I'm sorry, that is in the, in the footnotes, in the terminology. My apologies. Thank you. Okay, so even though it sounds like it's just, okay, understood. So maybe the developer could speak to why senior, the condos, the first phase is going to take three years.
The first thing I'd like to say is, the first phase, just so we're clear, is, it's 13 buildings. It's roughly half of the senior units. And so it's not, Phase One is going to be one building or one or two units. It is actually a substantial portion of the project. But the reason that that timeline is going to take as long as it is, is because these are individual units, some of the buildings have elevators, some of the buildings have separate infrastructure needs. And so it's just a more complicated project than other aspects. And that's, that's the development timeline that we've talked about with staff. That's where we think we can get all of the local and county approvals that are going to be needed to get the project done. So that's, the deadline is where it is because we think that's what can realistically happen. But I did want to make clear that it is a substantial portion of the senior units. It's not just, you know, some token or model unit.
Understood. And I guess, now, now I'm thinking, as you explain this, is there a way that we could put in a soft, or where basically, we get seven units, let's say, in a, in a year and a half or two years, half of that Stage One. So there's indication that there's actually something happening there. Is that even a possibility? Or does it all have to be done at that, at once?
There's flexibility in how the developer phases things out. Certain things are still going to take as long as they take. And so, for example, you know, building a building with an elevator in it, getting that permitting done and getting those inspections done, that tends to take 10 months, 11 months from permit issuance. And so if we were to build buildings, if we were to phase the building separately so that, say, all of the non-elevator buildings went first, for example, I think, yes, we could probably do a soft timeline earlier. The way that we've structured it now is on the idea of getting as many units done as quickly as possible. That might change the timeline on, on, let's say, if we had Phase One as a smaller phase, that might change the timeline on Phase Two a little bit. We'd have to talk about that internally.
You're saying that might delay it?
It might, yes. I don't, I can't tell you right now off the top of my head that it would. That's something we'd have to talk about internally. But yes, that was the concern, that was the thinking about the size of the phase and, and the timeline of the phase.
Okay, thank you.
And the last thing I'll bring up is that this timeline has been worked on for a while with staff and the city's engineers and the city's attorneys as well as the applicant. So if we modify anything here, and this is an agreement, not a unilateral...
Got it.
If that makes any sense, we may have to go back and it may not be able to get done today.
Got it.
Yeah, I know, we'd probably have to have internal conversations, and then we would want to have those separate conversations with staff.
And I'm not looking for modification, I'm trying to understand.
No, like, totally understood. And to the extent there are requested changes, we're happy to work on those with staff. We would just want to make sure, the goal here is that we end up with an agreement that is actually livable, so that we're not here asking for extensions, that we're actually getting all the objectives in it done. And so we just want to make sure at the end of the day, what we're agreeing to is entirely realistic, both on our end as developer and in terms of what we're expecting and asking for from staff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala?
And back to what the city attorney mentioned, I know that a lot of time was put by everybody to put this timeline together. And so, and at the same time, we just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing too, which may mean that some things might get delayed. But my question is, if we, just if, were considering a two-year and then a three-year option, does the, what, would, does it mean that a whole new plan comes back that only has dates for two years with what the developer agrees they could build? Meaning, what, does it mean that the developer could say, okay, okay, we'll do two years, but that means you're going to get 70% of what we originally said we would do? Is that how it would work?
It, it could. I mean, to be candid, I mean, so this plan was developed for three years in mind, and I'm not saying whether, you know, two years is better, three years is better. I'm not saying whether, you know, two years is better, three years is better. All I'm saying is that this particular plan was developed with that in mind, and so, if there's going to be a modification, it may be that, you know, the hard deadlines may need to be upped, right, or changed, or, or revised such that it, it meets whatever the developer is now saying, okay, we're going to shift some things around because we want to change what we can do in two years as opposed to three.
Yes. I'm thinking through this very fast, but it doesn't change that the, that at the end of five years, you still have a completed project.
Exactly. And that is the, so when we first started reviewing it, that was the goal, is that this has been going on for way too long, and how do we expedite this? And then, we took into account the, the comments from, from the residents who sort of live there, as well as the comments from city council, and said, we've got to have some hard deadlines. We've got to have some kind of penalty if those aren't met, and this is what we came up with. So, if there are other things that, you know, city council would like to add, again, I'm always open to that.
And then, just a final question is, if we were to say two years plus three, how long would that take before we'd have to come back, do you guys think, as a revised plan?
We'd have to renegotiate that with them. So, I mean, this has been, gosh, we've been talking to them probably for a couple months now, since, since we had this conversation at council last time, and we were having these conversations. This is the culmination of those conversations. So, we would need to, if it's, if that's the direction of the council, then we would need to go back and determine what would be realistic, which would further delay where we're at now.
Yeah.
And it may be the same, but because it's an agreement, like an MOU, for instance, we would have to make sure that the developer agrees with it before we brought it to council.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate, yeah, we, there's been a lot of thought in terms of the timing, and again, the way our internal processes work with the way realistic construction timelines.
Yeah, but I don't think, and Councilmember Rhodes, and Judge, if you could help me out here, I don't think that we're saying that if it, if you're saying two plus three, that you're saying you have to do the same amount of work in the three years than two. I don't think you're saying that, right? You're simply saying we mod, we would modify the plan to say, this is what can be done in two years, and then, it may mean there's less in there, right?
You got that? Go ahead.
So, I'm looking at the timeline, and if you look at the ninth quarterly update, right, so just after that two-year mark, all the teeth are in the, are prior to that. The in-lug fees are all due hard by that time. So, when you say two-year, three-year, I'm, I'm kind of with you in that we don't have to change any of this timeline, but the decision by either staff or council to continue on with this agreement, that makes the hard even harder, and I kind of like that. If it ends up causing a substantial delay in making this move forward, I don't like that, because ultimately, we're not talking about changing this timeline, we're just talking about where's the teeth. And the teeth are already in the timeline, and if you read it, it could actually be done by staff, not even brought back to council, if everything's going as planned, and they're continuing forward.
And it would seem that a lot of the legwork has already been done in terms of knowing how long it would take to do certain things, that those discussions have already been worked out, and that would maybe make it go quicker in terms of revising a timeline.
So, the simple solution is just ask the developer, are you good? Two-year, three-year?
Jordan, come on up.
Part of the protocol is we do not yell out from the back of the room, remember?
One point of clarification, Councilmember. It is structured so that there's a payment at year one, year two, and year three. So, there are, the proposal is three balloon payments, keeping teeth throughout the entire term.
Good clarification, thank you.
I don't want to negotiate against this, but what would likely happen, though, is like, it's not a simple, hey, just we're moving the line. What'll likely happen is, some of these payments might get deferred now beyond until there's some certainty, because there's a significant investment that's going to be made to get these projects moving forward.
What I would say from the developer's perspective is, it, it sounds to me like what we would end up with here is actually a situation where we have less time to produce, and also, you have less ways to hold us accountable. The three-year timeline gives you more financial incentive, it also gives us more milestones, and it gets the project further along. So, giving us less time to produce less does not seem like it's in the interest of getting the project done as quickly as possible. Now, we could structure a two-year timeline that looks exactly like years one and two of this, and I think we could probably get that done. Obviously, we believe we can get that done, or we wouldn't be here, but less will be done at the end of two years than would be done at the end of three years. And so, I, you know, our, our thinking is just, if the question is, from, from staff, from elected officials, from members of the public tonight, why isn't more done? We're saying, here's the amount of time we think it's going to take to get enough done that everyone's going to say, yes, you're actually making progress here. And the three years just gives us more time to make more progress.
I'm, I'm looking at the three-year timeline, I don't actually see that balloon payment of the third year. I see one and two, but I didn't see three.
Yeah, it, it's broken out into
It's, it's annually, at the anniversary of the adoption of the DA extension, if the hard milestones that are associated with that timeline are not met, then there is a balloon payment in each of the three years.
I know we're on that topic of the, the years, but I did want to add, while you're here at the podium, if I may, I'm taking your
You still have the floor.
The, Ms. Stoutland asked about the, the four lots, and the applications being in for those four lots. Do you have a status update on those four lots?
Yes, so, we're, we're currently in discussions between city's geotechnical experts and our geotechnical experts about lot stability. There was additional grading testing that was required, and has been completed, and so, we anticipate having all those applications in before the end of the month. The goal is that, you know, we're still, we're still moving along there, and as far as I'm aware, as of today, everything looks like we're going to be able to get that done by the end of the month.
Counsel, excuse me, Councilman, Councilmember Littler?
Thank you. So, I'm hearing this discussion, and I really don't want us to do anything that will stop forward progress, because that's what's really critical. And so, I, I'm just very mindful of that. I really want the senior condos developed, and I, what I'm seeing that is that that, primarily, the accountability is in the third year. My concern is if we move to two years, they'll put all their energy in what, listen to two years, and that maybe some of those three-year goals will slide just a bit. And so, I'm just, I just want to be on the record that I just think it's critical that we get those senior units built, and so, and I'm, I'm mindful that this is a, a negotiated contract arrangement, whatever we want to call this, that is a three-year term. I also appreciate the revelation that the developer is basically picking up the costs for all of this interaction legally, legally, and, and with our time, et cetera, with, with staff. And so, I'm, I'm very, I'm pleased that that is part of it. And so, I just want us to be very careful that we don't do something, much as I completely understand your desire to show accountability after two years, absolutely. I just want to make sure we don't do something that would delay this in any way, or delay what's important to me, I guess, which is, but, four lots are nice, but I really want the senior, the senior development. So, that's, that's, I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will now entertain a motion.
We have to close the hearing?
I'm sorry, thank you. I had to move things around. This hearing is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance 1364, approving development agreement, amendment number DA 2025-0001, and DA 0401, amendment number five, to allow a three-year time extension with a potential two-year option.
I'll second that. Call for the vote?
The motion passes with Mayor Potem Judge voting no.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
I'm under the impression we're going to be pulling one or more items from the consent calendar?
Let's at least pull three.
Number three?
I would absolutely say three, and I would like to have just a quick conversation about number nine, that I meant to have earlier in the day and didn't get done.
Pull number three and number nine. You have a motion to approve the remaining?
I'll move consent other than three and nine.
Second?
Thank you. Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, discussion on item number three. Councilmember Littler?
It's interesting to hear the commentary about the speakers earlier, because the one thing that stood out as I read the proposed changes, and I recognize, we're trying to make sure that our actions match what we have in our regulations or in our code, and so, I appreciate the intent of this. It is certainly not in any way to limit speech or freedoms, but just to make sure that we're in compliance with what our structure is. But I will say that the one thing that immediately jumped out on me was the limiting the sign sizing to eight and a half by 11. That, when I saw that, I thought, yikes, my eyesight's so bad, I'm wearing glasses these days. I'm, I, I want to be able to read and see what people are trying to tell me. And so, the question becomes, in my mind, do we, I would probably, my recommendation would probably be to remove section three, item 24, number four, which is specifically one that deals with signage. And I, and my thought was, if a size must be included, I would personally use the dimensions of a standard poster board size as the, as the extreme top size, but otherwise, I would just remove that specific item with signage.
Well, we can't remove it because we wanted to be able to stipulate no poles.
No, well, it's specifically, if you look at it, yeah, it's not the poles, the pole.
Oh, that are not attached to, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, I know what you mean now, thank you.
Right, so it's just that little number four, do not exceed 8.5 by 11 inches in size. That's all that would be removed. That was my suggestion, but there may be other thoughts.
I would think we need to put a maximum size of something, just for safety's sake, I mean, to be honest.
It's fine.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of what I was looking at, similar.
It's like 24 by 18?
It's something like that. It's, actually, I think Ms. Ewing's sign is
Yeah, how big is that? Something like that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think Ms. Ewing's sign is like a 20 by 30. Ms. Ewing? Your sign, 20 by 30-ish? Okay. I would say her sign is about a 20 by 30. So, that's about the size that you'd probably want that's actually readable.
I wrote down 24 by 30. I think that's, I think that's a standard size. No, I'm trying to, yeah, because I was up here putting papers together, so I could see how big, so. Thank you, a teacher would know that.
I have a 24 by 36.
Okay.
Yeah, that's too big.
That's a little too big, huh? With twice, because if you're, if it's sitting in front of you, you could be blocking the person next to you, because you have to have the signs in your possession. Councilmember Ayala says it should be half of a poster board size.
There you go, that.
It's not 12 by 18?
This is 24 by 36, so you're doing it 24 by, well, wait, how are we, 36 this way, so half of 36. It's 18.
24 by 18. Look at us, we, all we needed was a measuring tape up here, so. I think
This one's 20 by 24.
Okay. 20 by 24? Excuse us, we, no comments from the, the area right now, please? While we do some, I know you, we were all trying to help each other with this. So, what is the council's, Joseph, you're?
I mean, we'll figure, we have to figure out something, but in terms of, because we should have a maximum, like you're saying.
Yeah, just not to exceed.
But I was going to mention a couple of other points.
Okay.
The, I think we want to make everyone aware, too, that one of the lines that was struck and, struck out, struck and out, is that the policy has, that it says, "Public statements may be limited to 45 minutes total," and that is no longer part of the policy. And so, I, you know, I just want us to remember that we're actually, the, the policy that was implemented before said, if there's a lot, if there's a significant, significant number of speakers, that the total amount of time could be limited to 45 minutes, and each speaker's time will be shortened proportionately to be able to meet that 45-minute time limit. And so, that is proposed to be taken out, which I think shows that we actually want, that should not have been in there, right? But I just want to say that, I just want to say that because I don't think many people are going to say, that's what the council did tonight, right? And I just want to make it very clear, we're actually expanding how, and saying, there is no limit here. And I think that's important. I think the other thing, and Mr. Lappert, that you, you mentioned this, it talks about when there are 20 or more speakers, and you, you mentioned yourself, that's a very, on the rare occasion that there's 20 or more. In most meetings, we don't have that many, that many speakers, so it would not affect most of the, the meetings that we have. So, thank you for bringing that up as well. So, I just wanted to bring up those two things, and then, I know we have to come back to the, the size of the sign, which I think we can, we can do. The other thing I wanted to quickly bring up, though, was the, the speaker cards, and right now, it says that we, that they will be distributed until the beginning of public statement. City clerk.
Item three, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think that that's really important, that we start to enforce that, and here's the reason why. If I'm a speaker, because, and you, everyone, listen up, because you guys are, so, I don't want people to get frustrated if we don't do this. Let's say there's 19 speakers, and so, you think you get three minutes. Everyone's good. You came in on time, you did what you were supposed to do. Someone walks in 10 minutes late, and now turns in a card. Oh, I still want to turn in a card. That hits the 20, and now someone's going to say, okay, sorry, now you only get two minutes. And then, people are going to get annoyed by that. So, I think that we should, that we should keep that in, but that we need to, but we should enforce it, and maybe even say, okay, we're about to start public comment, if there's anyone else who needs to put a, turn in a speaker card, now's your time to do it, because if they don't, we, it's in the policy. And I just think we should keep that in there and enforce it, so that everyone gets their allotted time and doesn't get it taken out at the last second because someone decided not to follow the policy.
Any conversation on that?
Actually, I, I do a little conversation. I appreciate you pointing that out, and I wanted to extend that discussion a little bit, because I, I want to avoid any appearance that we're trying to limit speech in any way. In fact, something else that has been, that was in there before, that has been stricken from the record, it says that speaker, it used to say, speaker cards will only be distributed at the city council meeting. We took that out. In other words, if you wanted to come in this week and pick up a speaker card, you could, and be ready for next week, ready to go, you could theoretically could do that, I suppose. And theoretically, I could have one in my pocket and, and say, oh, you want to speak tonight? If I understand the way this is being taken out, I could hand you the card and say, come back tonight, here's your, here's your speaker card, we would love to hear from you. So, in any, what we're actually doing in many ways is changing this to be more abrasive and, and more opportunities to, just to let people participate, I'm hoping.
Okay. Yes, I understand Councilmember Ayala's reasoning on the number of cards. We had a little bit of discussion on that, whether we wanted to have another announcement that, okay, now that we're starting it, like you just said, please remind everybody to turn their cards in. I think that would be very helpful to the community, and it would also give us a timeframe as to how many speakers we have. Tonight, we had 16, we could have divided it into two, but with 16, let's get it, you know, let's give everyone the opportunity to speak at the same time. So, if we have 40, then we're probably going to So if we have 40, then we're probably gonna, just for a little bit. Our attorney, you have a comment?
One of the things, as, as I read this, I thought about is that we don't sometimes announce whether there's anybody else in the audience who wants to speak, and there may be people who come to the council meeting who don't have the ability to read and write. So even making an announcement, if, even if they don't fill out a speaker card right before we begin public statements, I think would be a good requirement, because then we can make sure that even if there are people in the audience who can't do that, they have the ability to be able to speak.
Good idea. I agree with that.
Does that require writing something into that, a point within this?
What I was thinking is, and again, this is just discussion, but could we just add it as a little, a standard verbiage as part of the agenda, so we just always remember just to state that?
That's correct, and I think that that would be probably the easiest way to do it, so it could become part of the regular speech portion that the city clerk gives.
And then we can do a reminder if we need to.
That is correct.
That sounds good. All right. So we've agreed on most everything except the size of the.
I'm gonna throw out 20, 30.
Okay.
How about that?
20, 30?
I mean, John's already got.
And if somebody's at 21, 30, unless, if they're not bothering anybody, it's, we're not gonna measure them coming in the door.
Except Michael Shaw.
So, yeah, sorry. But it's more for, to keep, to be fair for everyone so that they don't interfere with other people, so.
Right, and the intention would be that if it is blocking someone's view, then we would ask them politely to move it so that it's.
The side or to the back.
Right.
So, all right, are we all in agreement with that? With that, may I have a motion to approve item number three with amendments?
I so move that we approve item three with the amendment to section 24 dash four, which suggests, which states that they won't, they will not exceed 20 by 30 inches in size.
Second.
And inclusion, I'm sorry, and inclusion of the city clerk's statement.
Second.
Call for the vote. Mayor Protem. Counsel, okay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Consent nine?
No, we don't. Item, consent item nine.
It was nine. I'm sorry, they're all saying nine. Okay. Consent item nine. Councilmember Littler, you had a question?
Thank you, I do, and this is for Mr. Fujiwaki or his representative, please. I'm sorry, I meant to call you, but thank you for answering tonight. This particular deals with a sewer line replacement project. It was bid out, et cetera. We got a bid. Engineer's estimate was 660,000. Low bid came at 990,000, basically 50% higher than the estimate.
Yes.
I guess my question is, can this be done in-house? I know that I spoke with some of your amazing employees who do sewer line repairs, install sewer, and the impression I got that not, this was, I confess, this was at National Night Out, that I spoke with some of your great employees. And I got, and the conversation I had with one of them at the time was that, oh, sometimes guys come in and do the work we can do, and, you know, we can do the smaller pipeline, et cetera. It was just, it was just that, that general. And so I guess my question is, is this an example of, could this be done in-house?
I don't believe so. This, my recollection, is a 12 to 21-inch sewer line, and we're using the special lining technique, and we don't have that equipment with the city.
Okay.
So these kinds of techniques need to be bid out. Smaller projects, eight, six, four-inch sewer lines potentially could be done.
But 12 inches is not.
Well, yeah, 12, 21, those are big pipes, and, and the lining is a little bit more efficient and a little bit not quite as expensive, so, but we don't have the equipment to do a lining.
Okay. Thank, thank you. That was what I needed to hear. Appreciate it. I'm happy to move passage of item nine.
I need a second.
Second.
Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8A, second reading of ordinance number WWD-19 of the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, adding chapter 15 to title six, sanitation and health of the municipal code of the City of Simi Valley, replacing ordinance WWD-18, and establishing requirements for the installation, maintenance, and testing of backflow prevention assemblies and the prohibition of crossconnections per Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook Regulation. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number WWD-19 and ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, adding chapter 15 to title 19, sanitation and health of the municipal code of the City of Simi Valley, replacing ordinance number WWD-18, and establishing requirements for the installation, maintenance, and testing of backflow prevention assemblies and the prohibition of crossconnections per Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook Regulation.
Thank you. Any discussions? Councilmember Rhodes?
I would move to, as recommend, or I, I move the ordinance WWD-19 be adopted.
Call for the vote. Mayor Protem and Councilmember Ayala? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9A, discussion and approval of the revised City of Simi Valley Statement of, Statement of Investment Policy, and Deputy Administrative Services Director Fiscal Services Marvin Lopez is here to present this item.
Hello again, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we present the proposed 2025 Statement of Investment Policy, our guiding framework for the management of the city's public funds. Last adopted in July 2018, the policy defines the full range of authorized and suitable investments under state law and our conservative investment philosophy. In collaboration with Insight Investments, our advisors, we've refined the policy's language and incorporated key updates, including the removal of an outdated joint agency reference, alignment of corporate bond ratings with state code requirements, addition of the California Asset Management Program, revision of LEAF account limits, and clarifying per-account language in accordance with state code. These changes preserve safety and liquidity as our primary objectives while providing flexibility to pursue returns responsibly. Staff recommends the approval of the 2025 Statement of Investment Policy, and we, as well as the consultants, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Ayala?
Okay, this goes back to what we were chatting about, but as I was thinking about this, and our friends from Insight Investment are here still, and they're very smart people, right? They presented very intelligently, way smarter than me, and that's being very truthful, right, when it comes to this? And I just don't think that they would have even put in this booklet three additional investment policies if they did not think that they were something to actually consider, right? We didn't ask them to put these three in there. They proactively said, we have three additional ones that you might want to consider. And they are, and I, so I take them on their word because I don't think they would lead us astray, right? So what I, I, I'm not saying tonight that I'm prepared, or any of us are prepared, to say we need to adopt any of these three, but I think it is worth having staff work with Insight to better understand the three and maybe come back with a potential recommendation that we can then decide if we want to move forward with one, two, or three of them.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Ayala, I agree. I think those were interesting options brought before us. One of the things that I want to understand with this strategy of our, handling our money is we have, we have two piles, that which we control and that which we outsource, and they're pretty basically evenly divided. And we want to make sure we have liquidity. I would like to know and understand better, I asked the question earlier of Insight, and they mentioned diversity is important, diversification is important. So what is in LEAF and what is in CAMP? And don't they by nature of themselves have a, a diversity that ensures a, a pretty steady rate of return?
Thank you, Councilmember. LEAF and CAMP are very similar investment vehicles in that they are highly liquid and thus, and, and very safe, and thus they allow us to keep funds with interests being earned, but also allow that liquidity for operating and capital needs. The, the main difference that comes to my mind is the duration of the underlying investments in those two poles. CAMP has a shorter duration than LEAF does. And what that means, based on historical data and trends that we've seen, is that when we are in an environment where rates are going up, CAMP rates will go up quicker than LEAF rates. When we are, are in an environment where rates are going down, CAMP rates will go down quicker than LEAF. So those are the, that, that's the main difference that we see. And we're gonna pull up a chart here that's going to give you a visual of what that looks like so that we can see in the last 15 years or so what that looks like.
I thought we were gonna get that chart, so I'm surprised when you're like, questions, okay. I'd love to see this, so.
So what you can see is LEAF in the green, CAMP in the black, and as rates were trending down from 2009 to 2013, you see that LEAF was earning a little bit of a spread above CAMP. And once rates started going up, you can see a little bit after 2015, there's a sharp increase in CAMP, and then CAMP starts to earn a little bit more than LEAF on the way up. And then once that peaks, where you see that 2.64, and it starts coming down, you'll see that that decline is sharper in CAMP than it is in LEAF. And then as you can see from 2019 to 2021, there is spread invested in LEAF versus CAMP. Once we get to 2021 and rates started going up rather quickly, you see that there is a large spread that CAMP was able to, to gain quicker than LEAF. And now that rates are starting to go back down, you're seeing that CAMP and LEAF are getting close again. As we continue to see interest rates trend down, we're getting very close to that point where CAMP is going to start paying less than LEAF. At least that's what historical data would indicate, and that's what the data would indicate. So as an example, we pulled, because all of this is happening so real-time, some data about September. At the beginning of, of September, LEAF was paying, had a daily rate of 4.25, while CAMP had a seven-day rate of 4.41. So there was a 16 basis point spread of CAMP over LEAF. On September 29th, the daily LEAF rate was 4.19, and the CAMP rate, seven-day rate, was 4.26. So in one month, that spread went from 16 basis points to seven basis, basis points. The decrease that we saw in CAMP was 15 basis points, while LEAF was only six basis points. So as we potentially go down this downward trending part of the cycle, we would expect LEAF to start paying a little bit more than CAMP. And then as time goes on, we would expect to see trends like what's displayed in this chart.
Were any adjustments made in 2021 or thereafter to take advantage of the rising interest rates?
In terms of the CAMP versus LEAF.
Mixture.
Mix. We did not. The historical practice of the city was to put all of the funds in LEAF. And now that we have gone through this experience and, and seen that, if we were to confidently expect rates to go up, not that we're trying to predict that or time the market or anything of that nature, we would want more of a diversified portfolio. So while now is not necessarily, I, this is my opinion, I don't believe it's a great time to get aggressive with CAMP. I think for the long run, what we want to do is have a more diverse, diversification between those buckets to mitigate the differences in the spread that we see.
We, we, we lost a lot of opportunity, I think, in the, in the past four years by how we were not adjusting the buckets. At the very least, if you see a downward trend towards falling interest rates, maybe moving to a 50/50 so that we take advantage either way, do diversification. So we don't have an active person that's looking at this and making predictive models to say we should readjust the balances in these two accounts.
Would you like to take that one?
Well, we don't want to get into the process of trying to chase interest rates. We try to have a portfolio that is kind of steady, and sometimes the, you know, we'll make more. Sometimes maybe we'll make less below the curve, but no, we, we're not trying to predict what's gonna happen next month and, and moving money and trying to chase what, what we don't know is gonna happen.
Okay, so there's like zero chasing, and there's zero balance in this because we haven't made an adjustment in the past four years, is what I'm hearing.
We have put some more money in CAMP lately. We've put 10 million in in July, in August, and we put 20 million in in September. It does make sense to balance them, but we're not gonna try to guess what, what's gonna happen next month and just moving money every month.
In the parts of the money that we manage, do we successfully maintain the six-month supply of cash on hand?
Yes.
Okay. So if we were to look at the other investment vehicles for insight managed things and say, hey, for that bucket, for that pile, that doesn't even affect our six-month supply of liquidity on hand, do you think it would be irresponsible of council to say, hey, look at these other three options to, to be a little more aggressive?
No, that would not be irresponsible. We do want to keep in mind, however, any projects that may become, any large projects that may be coming up where we might be spending a large amount of money all of a sudden, so we definitely want to keep that in, in, in mind.
And those are predictable by each year's budget of what is, we're anticipating spending, unless it's an emergency, but that's different. That's a different bucket of money. That's why you have stuff on hand. And since we know that, I would highly endorse, Councilmember Ayala's leaning and suggestion that we look at any legal investment opportunity. I don't think it's being irresponsible with these type of vehicles being brought for us. I don't think it's enhancing our risk profile such that we are endangering taxpayer money when in fact we should be enhancing taxpayer money and doing at least what we can to keep up with inflation. And when we're falling behind in inflation every year, might as well shove it in a mattress, and it's not, it's not doing us any good. So I, my posture is, let's, wherever we can, within the scope of the laws of California, try to increase the return as opposed to being the third item on the list of, of things for a certain segment of the money. Maybe we do it to the second item. We still need to be fiscally responsible, but, and liquid, but it can be less liquid. But I would like to get a higher return.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you. So my, I want to understand what determines whether we put, whether we invest funds internally or the funds are given to Insight for their investment? What, how do we make that determination? Do grants go someplace? Do tax revenue go elsewhere? What is that determinant?
It comes from cash flow needs.
Okay.
So the way it works in, mechanically speaking, is we have all the bonds that are in our advisor managed portfolio, and as those bonds mature, we can decide, are we going to reinvest that into another similar security? Or do we need the cash, and do we need to pull that back? Over the recent years, cash has grown a little bit, so we've actually done the opposite where, okay, we are reinvesting all the bonds that are maturing, but we also did put a little bit more cash in the fixed term portfolio. So it's, to, to, to answer your question, it's the cash flow needs for the organization. We need, LEAF and CAMP are highly liquid, specifically LEAF as an example. You can move up to $10 million the same day. So that, it's not a checking's account, but for, you know, to the 10-millionth materiality, it's, it's basically like a checking's account. So that would determine. So that would determine what the balance is between what's in LEAF and CAMP versus what's in the bond portfolio.
Got it, got it, okay. And so what I'm hearing is that we successfully manage for internally for extent, for extreme liquidity, let me put it that way. Is that accurate for maximum liquidity?
Yes, for the, for liquidity needs that we have, which is not just the operating side of it, but also the capital side of it. We have a large capital budget, and that gets a little bit trickier, based on, okay, we have a budget for a project that might be X number of years, we have to do the legwork to figure out, okay, what is the realistic flow of this project? And that will help us determine what is a comfortable amount of funds that we can pull out of the LEAF and CAMP buckets and put into the term buckets.
Okay, I appreciate it. Can you call my attention, if it's in here, as I understand the presentation that Insight gave earlier, thank you very much, it was very well done, could you call my attention to where it states what our benchmarks are for their purpose? Because as I understand it, in order to do any of what you two are talking about, we would have to modify our stated benchmark, is that correct? I'm just curious where it is stated in our policy, or that you're, that's before us.
It's section 14.1.
So 14.1, the investment portfolio shall be designed to attain a market rate of return throughout budgetary economic cycles, taking into account prevailing market conditions, risk constraints for eligible securities and cash flow requirements. The performance of Simi Valley's investments shall be compared to the Intercontinental Exchange ICE B of A one-to-three-year U.S. Treasury Index, which is what you've actually, those are changes you're making right now. So it didn't say that before? I mean, those are additions, those are red line that you're adding that, correct?
So the prior language was, do you have the red line version?
Yeah, I'm looking at the red line version right now.
So they just renamed that?
Got it.
That benchmark.
Thank you.
So it just went from Bank of America Merrill Lynch to what it stays now? But that's actually the same benchmark.
Okay, got it. So if there was to be any conversation about potentially asking Insight to look at more of, well, if we were to change our investment policy a little bit, I realize it's, it's safety and liquidity, safety, and then returns, I realize, and I recognize those are critical, but it also depends on what we're using the funds for, et cetera. But, so if we were to ask them to explore potentially higher returns within the limits of state governance, this is where we'd have to change it, and if so, what should it read? Three to five-year, I mean, what is the recommendation from the city if we were to consider that?
So there would be two potential points of change to the current policy that we have in front of you. The first would be to potentially add those three other vehicles that?
So you would add them by name into this benchmark policy? Is that where you add it?
We would add those, not to this section, so the 14.1 section would be the duration benchmark. So that's where we would say, we're going to compare our portfolio to a longer portfolio, which in theory would earn us more money. And then the other three investment vehicles would be in the authorized investment section, which is 8.0.
I'm sorry, which one, three?
8.0.
8.0.
Yeah.
And then in 8.1, we'd have to remove collateralized mortgage obligations from being prohibited.
Got it, okay, okay.
What would the new benchmark be if we wanted to extend the time?
I would say that that'd be a discussion point among the council, and our advisors could help us navigate that dialogue.
There isn't currently a set benchmark, like, we have a set benchmark now for our current timeframe. There is not one that we would just naturally graduate to that has a longer one, or you would, you would, that would be the discussion point to figure out which?
Yeah, there are different options. So I believe the way Mary stated is the sky's the limit.
I was busy looking, ready to look up all the benchmarks.
Insight is shaking their hands.
I think what I've heard from both ends of the dais is that we would like them to look into possibilities of adopting the new benchmarks, and what it would look like, how we would make it work, and what the potential positives would be. So that's direction to staff. Do we want to stick with that right now, or do we want to approve the existing one? Let them come back to us? That's a question.
I would recommend that the council approve what is before you this evening, and that staff return with the options as presented by Insight this evening.
That's what I was thinking, so I wanted to clarify that with everybody. Okay, all right, so do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the City of Simi Valley's proposed 2025 statement of investment policy. Yeah.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we've gone in direction to staff. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9B, to provide direction to staff regarding the year-end general fund, fund balance policy, and Administrative Services Director Carolyn Johnson is here to present this item.
So tonight you have before you the city's general fund, fund balance policy. The policy was adopted by City Council in April of '22 to redirect unspent general fund dollars at year end, rather than allowing those dollars to just fall back into the fund balance. The current policy distributes the funds by transferring 40% into a retirement investment account, 40% into an infrastructure investment fund, and 20% into a contingency fund. Over the past three years, this has resulted in 12.3 million being paid to CalPERS towards the city's unfunded liability, and over $9 million put towards street maintenance. At the June 10th City Council retreat, the council requested reviewing the policy to ensure the identified allocation areas are still meeting the city's needs. As the fiscal year 2324 general fund surplus funds have not yet been assigned, this would now be a good time to review the policy and make any revisions that council feels appropriate. One option that you could consider are to adjust the maximum balance limit on the contingency fund, which is currently at $2 million. This is the only fund in the policy that has a maximum balance limit. There's not been more than $1 million spent from this fund in any one year so far, however, depending on future anticipated needs, this maximum dollar amount could be adjusted either up or down, and staff is prepared to make any updates that council feels necessary.
Any comments, concerns, questions? Councilmember Litzler?
I just, thank you for, I just, I just have some questions of understanding. Can you explain to me what is meant by the statement, should the unassigned fund balance exceed 30% of the proposed year's budgeted general fund expenditures, then the surplus funds are distributed?
So if the unassigned fund balance is a small amount, if it's not over 30% of the proposed year's budgeted general fund expenditure, so usually we're doing this when we're bringing the budget document to council, so we have the proposed budget. So if the fund balance is less than 30%, if the, if the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, the portion of the general fund's fund balance that's unassigned, that needs to remain at 30% of the proposed year's expenditure.
Okay, so if it happened to go above 30%, then we would talk about it, okay?
If it's less, then we can't redistribute.
Got it, okay, I just want to understand. 40% goes, has been going to retire our pension obligation liability, et cetera. What percentage of PERS and OPIB are we currently funded at?
We are currently funded, the most recent numbers we have are from June 30th of 2023, based on the actuaries. Safety, we're currently funded at 69.2%, and miscellaneous at 70%.
But we've done some substantial payments since June of '23.
So, and I'm sorry, explain, I, when you say, help me understand, you said safety?
Safety is funded at 69.2%.
And that's OPIB?
That's the PERS.
PERS.
And then miscellaneous is funded at 70%.
Okay.
For PERS.
Okay, and what does that rec, what does that look like in real dollar amount? Like, let's say we wanted it actually to be 100% funded, how much money would that, I mean, I'm just, what are we talking about?
We have outstanding, I have updated numbers for June of '24.
Okay, good.
169 million.
So, I'm sorry, 169 million is what we owe?
That's the unfunded liability.
That's the unfunded liability. Okay, I just want to be sure I'm understanding the numbers, okay. In the infrastructure, right now we're putting 40% into, if there's, if there's a surplus, into infrastructure. It appears that in the past that we've just been putting that into roads, but as I understand the report, it's to be used for any one-time capital needs, including but not limited to roads, equipment replacement, deferred maintenance. So that, those funds could be used, let's say, to renovate the library, or to put in new signage, or to?
So there's actually, if the council doesn't want to make any changes to the surplus funds policy this evening, what staff would do is return with recommendations for how to allocate these funds. Some examples of that include the DMV facility needs a new roof, the PSC building needs a new roof, the city hall needs its skylights repaired, and a couple of other types of uses. So depending upon the council's direction this evening, if council wants us to return with funding options, then we would return with that.
Got it, okay, thank you. I'm just trying to understand, yeah, how these funds are used, could be used, should be used, et cetera. Okay, that, that's my questions for the moment, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say previously, the council has wanted to invest it in streets.
Yeah, absolutely.
So obviously, that's always the council's prerogative.
Councilmember Ayala?
In the same vein of where the money goes, the allocation, for the contingency fund, or for the infrastructure for that matter, but more so the contingency, which is more of a bucket, just a empty, you know, left, whatever's left bucket, does the, do the council members have, provide, can they provide input to staff to consider putting things on the list to be considered, to be paid for with the contingency fund?
So typically, the way the contingency fund is allocated is based on council requests for items that were not included in the original adopted budget. So for example, a couple of years ago, the council had determined that we wanted to cut down or reevaluate the trees on Sinaloa, the eucalyptus trees, as they were providing a hazard in the area. And so we did not have funding in the budget to do the tree analysis, and then the related tree trimming and removal. So that funding came out of the contingency fund budget, but that was a council direction. So it wasn't necessarily a council special project, but more so a council direction based on upcoming needs as identified by the body.
So do we have to publicly state if we want something to be considered as part of a contingency fund expense, or do we, can we just let you, send an email that says, hey, when your, when staff is working on this, can you think about this?
Yes, council would have to approve anything in a public meeting that would be allocated from the contingency fund.
Yes, allocated, but I'm saying just on the list to be considered.
If it's something that you would wish to be considered, certainly if that's something that the council is interested in as we're returning with this report, I would encourage you to bring that up at this time, so we can incorporate it into the future report. If you don't know what it is at this time, then certainly you can reach out.
Okay, as long as there's time to do it later, then I'm okay with that. I'm not saying we're going to do it. I think that all of us might look at, be through different meetings with different people, or something have, hear about one-time requests, where we look at them and say, well, sorry, that sounds like a great idea, but we don't have money for you at this time. And this might be an opportunity for us to at least have the other members consider specific items, and who knows, maybe they say yes.
Well, and one of the things that I would also encourage the council to remember is that this is still general fund money, so even though it is, we put it in somewhat of a special fund, it is still general fund dollars, and so that, that goes to run the entire operation of the city, including salaries, operations, et cetera. And there are many, there are many requests and needs for those dollars.
Yep, got it, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Fujiwaki, I might have a question or two in this for you. I wrestled with this. I sat in the audience watching the council pass this ordinance, this, this distribution of excess funds, and I was proud of council for doing that, because we had roads that really needed repair, and we had potholes that needed to be fixed. And now we are at a point where potholes are called in and, and fixed. The long-term plan, the amount of dedicated dollars to that has gone down, because we do on-demand more than proactive. One of the things I wanted to know and discuss was our pavement management index.
Yes.
Back when we made this decision to dedicate money to roads, do you remember what that number was? And then can you give me some idea of where we stand on that number today?
The number to?
Back when they passed this four years ago or so?
Yeah.
Or when the last study was done, which is almost the same timeframe?
Yeah, the last study was done in about five years ago, and we're currently updating that. Back in, five years ago, we had an average, what's known as a pavement condition index, of 67 to 69. In order to maintain that, we needed about 11, a recollection is $11 million a year. We have received $3 or $4 million a year over the last year, and we've started to catch up on our major streets. However, some of our residential streets still need quite a bit of work.
And our index you're predicting is coming in at what?
The index coming up hopefully remains the same, because day by day, the, as the streets continue not to be rehabilitated, or slurry sealed, or anything, they deteriorate and deteriorate. And I think, I believe the deterioration is occurring faster than we're, we're addressing the need.
Okay, so.
It's kind of a endless.
It's an endless cycle.
Yes.
My impression is that the, the index was lower five years ago, and, and coming in higher now, but it sounds like you're telling me that that's not necessarily?
It's been in the high 60s, you know, I think it's, arterials, I think, we looked it up, and arterials at the time was 69.
And what, what number of dollars are we spending per year on average right now?
On all of our street projects? We probably spend three to four, no, five, five million on major streets. We have a fund from the state called SB1, which is about $3.5 million, which we spend primarily on residential streets. And the CDBG fund is, it's gone down dramatically over recent years, it may be only about $400,000 a year. And that's on top of our normally funded pothole operation?
Right.
In our operating budget.
So I tried to look back years before the past, the five-year-ago index, and what we were spending on roads, and the best I could figure from the budgets, because they're a little convoluted, was that we're spending like $2, $3 million a year, and it jumped to about $11 million a year for the past few years. So?
Correct.
I'm thinking that we've caught up some, and, and that our index is actually rising, or at least holding, holding firm, which is good, because it would have fallen dramatically had we not invested that money.
Yeah, well, thanks to the council's allocation of funds, we have been doing a good amount of overlay, and, and I believe that you see it every day out on our streets.
As I was looking at the project list, it looks like there's already a bunch of projects ready to go that have already been funded in the, in the current budget cycle.
Yes.
Yeah. With that in mind, I'm, I'm okay foregoing the dedication directly towards infrastructure projects, if we have an additional need for money in the general fund for that 40% of the, what we would allocate from, from excess funds, and I think, good. But on the other 40%, we are talking about, where's that 40% go? Sorry, streets and roads and?
Retirement.
I am led to believe? I am led to believe, and I'm open to anyone correcting me in this, that a seventy percent funding rate on retirement obligations is a comfortable place to be. A hundred percent is awesome, and we've done some, I think, since we had the last report of sixty-nine percent and the amount of money that we've put in and strategically bought down some of that debt, I would hazard that we are in a better position today as a result of that. And if we needed to pause the allocation of those funds as well, I'd be comfortable with that. The contingency fund, for that which we don't know, which is what a contingency is, I would love to see that continue to be funded. But I'd be, I would be open to the idea if it was desired by staff to reallocate funds towards some immediate projects or general fund money, that we pause our current policy and move in that direction.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, question? Well, do the second and then questions.
Okay.
Was that a motion?
Oh, okay, it was discussion. I took it as a motion. All right, Councilmember Ayala, questions?
I don't know all the rules yet, but I think I got that one right. Just because I want to better understand. But you said you're okay with the contingency. So would the motion be to pause the other two, but keep the, is that what you're thinking? And what would you, would that mean, where would that eighty percent go then?
It's my understanding, it ends up in general fund and then can be reallocated to things that are needed right now.
Which is why we've, okay, I see your line of questioning, yeah. I would agree with that because I think the contingency, I think there's other stuff that would end up being one-time things that we need. And then that eighty percent could be really used right now. So I would agree with Councilmember Rhodes' assertion there.
And I would, I'm sorry, I would be supportive to, I like the fact, I mean, I was on the side when we had the whole discussion. I like the fact that we were very purposeful about using the occasional surplus funds. And it really arose particularly during COVID. And I don't know that that will always be the case. In fact, likely, it isn't particularly going to be the case. So I guess I understand, and I would be supportive of that. I think for just one year, I'd like to reevaluate it in a year and then see where we stand. That would be, if that's okay.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would propose a move that we pause the current policy on surplus fund allocations for one year, moving the two forty percent allocations into the general fund and keeping the contingency fund in place. Second.
Call for the vote? The motion passes unanimously? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Ayala.
Okay, Tuesday, September sixteenth, I attended the youth council meeting. And on Wednesday, September seventeenth, the youth employment services meeting. We had a presentation from the Rotary, and they have a, an initial plan in place for next year to do a, a, like a job show specifically for students who want to go into the trades and bringing in all different, you know, local colleges and things that's, that are specific to that and making it a hands-on experience for them, which sounds really great. On Thursday, September eighteenth, I attended Martha Coin's retirement party from our city. On Saturday, September twentieth, I volunteered as part of the Coastal Cleanup Day, and we cleaned up what is known for us as Duck Park, which was nice to do. Also on that same day, September twentieth, I attended the Kid Gloves Boxing thirtieth anniversary with Robert Ortiz. We know he does a great job with all of the work he does. Sunday, the twenty-first, was the peace concert, and I was the emcee for that event. On Monday, the twenty-second, I attended the swearing-in for Sergeant Stringer and Van Fleet. I think he's here today in the back of the room. On Thursday, the twenty-fifth, I attended the swearing-in of our new officer, Jose Lopez. Also on that same day, the twenty-fifth, I attended and served dinner at our city volunteer dinner, thanks to Viva La Pasta for catering for us. Friday through Saturday, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I attended the Leadership Simi Valley Retreat. Sunday, the twenty-eighth, I attended Cops and Cruisers, where I volunteered for the ice bath in the dunk tank. Quick little story, Santa Susanna, those kids sang the National Anthem there. They did a great job. Of course, I know them from different youth council events and so forth. Two of them came over to the dunk tank, and I said, no, no students from Santa Susanna are allowed to play. They both looked at me and they said, but, but we're from Santa Susanna. We don't know how to throw. And they missed all of them. Monday, September twenty-ninth, brown bag lunch, I was a speaker for the speaker series at Royal High School, spoke to the students there. Tuesday, the thirtieth, I attended the grand opening of the Thousand Oaks Cybersecurity and Media Center for Girls at the, at the Girl Scout place there. It's amazing. They can build their own drones. They can play with microscopes. It's really a great hands-on experience for them. Thursday, the October second, I attended the RDP meeting, the Regional Defense Partnership. And I normally don't speak about these meetings because some of them are quite non-eventful. But this was a great one because we had a speaker who is the lead for the United States for the, an envoy for unmanned weapons. And right now, once a year, all of the NATO countries come together and show each other and test unmanned weapons that we may need to use. It was in Portugal. And he had just come back from Portugal and put together a video for us to see what all these other countries are working together to do. But the exciting thing about it is he told us that we are a final, we, Ventura County, is a finalist to host this same event next year at one of our local bases. And so that would be really great if we could get that. And so he was excited to tell us about that. And also on that same day, Thursday, the second, I attended the Commander Craig Duggan's retirement ceremony at the police department. On Saturday, the fourth, in the morning, I had the pancake breakfast, supporting Meals on Wheels at the senior center. I then volunteered at Oktoberfest and then finished off the night with our students participating in the Simi Valley School Band Spectacular, which was really spectacular. And today, Monday, the sixth, I attended the swearing-in of our newest officer, Bryce Parker. He is a Royal High School graduate, lives here, grew up here, was, and was a police officer with Oxnard PD and now came home. So we're happy to have him here and welcome him back to Simi in terms of not just living, but also working. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report will be briefer because I was out of the country for a great part of this. On Tuesday, the sixteenth, I had a breakfast meeting with one of our unhoused residents looking to move to the next level. And we may have got some employment and, and some, some services for that individual. And so it was a, it was a great one-on-one. That evening, I attended the Neighborhood Council Number Four meeting in the community room here. On October first, via Zoom, I attended the Executive Administration Committee meeting for SCAG. And on October second, also via Zoom, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting via SCAG. I arrived back in town on the fourth, which was Pancake Breakfast Day. And while I knew I would not be back in time, I arranged to have all of the coffee brewed and delivered for the event. So the coffee got there on time. And then today, I also attended the swearing-in ceremony this morning. I also had a meeting with the new Board of Director Chair for the Samaritan Center, and we had a good discussion about things moving forward there. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you. I'll start with Tuesday, September sixteenth, where I had the AWA Water Issues Committee meeting. I will say that there was a presentation given there by Kiagis, which was particularly interesting because they talked about their internship program and how they were building it and how it would attract people that stayed. And as I was, as we were learning about it, it did occur to me that this might be something actively we look at with our own water agency, that we maybe model after what Kiagis is doing with specific internship training in, in that area. So anyway, it was, but they have lots of insights on that. On, later in the afternoon, I too met with Mr. Doug Landen, who is the new Board Chair of the Samaritan Center. And appreciate his enthusiasm, his reaching out, and his wanting to really make a difference there. September seventeenth, Councilmember Rhodes did not mention it, but he did actually attend the Simi Valley Arts Commission meeting that day. And so, and we got much, we got some good things accomplished. Then he had to go catch a plane, I think, so, so all is well. Thursday, September eighteenth, met with city manager, had VCOGS Administrative Committee meeting. I will tell you that one of the discussions is, of course, their big annual event is the annual dinner that is held in Moore Park at Ammon High. However, with the weather that occurred, the Seroptimists' Little Black Dress has been moved to the exact same date. And so I had to apologize that probably all of my counterparts are going to miss VCOGS meeting. But I just want you to know that I've calculated it's about a mile and a half apart. So if you want to go back and forth, you can maybe do both. So just FYI. I too attended Martha Coin's retirement. And thank you to a woman who's served us for thirty-plus years and just been a great, great addition to our city. Want to recognize her. That evening, because Little Black Dress was canceled, we were able to attend the thirtieth annual member and elected officials reception held by AWA, their thirtieth, thirtieth annual, you were there as well, and held at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. Friday, September nineteenth, I took advantage of the open house that was being held by the Simi Valley's YMCA, where they wanted to show their expansion plans and talk about financially, how they were going to make it happen. Excited to hear about the work they're actually doing with our city to get that happening. He did share a little bit how our city development's a little bit different than other places where we require more upfront. Let me just say that. That was their observation than other cities. But now that they understand that, they're giving us more upfront, and it's, it's going to get done, and it's going to get done quickly, I believe. So I appreciate their enthusiasm. Also on Saturday, September twentieth, I too attended the thirtieth anniversary of Kid Gloves Boxing Foundation. Great to have that in our community. Sunday, September twenty-first, I too attended the Free Peace Concert, where you, where Councilmember Ayala emceed, where Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Mayor Kavanaugh greeted and was even found to be dancing to music in, in the audience. And so, and I may have been pulling a few strings there myself, playing the harp. Monday, September twenty-second, I too attended the swearing-in of Sergeant Stringer and Van Fleet. Congratulations to them. I also went and sat and observed the SEIU's strike vote that evening. Just I wanted to be, wanted just to have a conversation with those who wanted to talk to me and to find out what their concerns were. And I, and it was, it was a nice actual opportunity to have some good conversation with people on the side. So that was held just outside here. Tuesday, September twenty-third, I met with Cody of Bunker, oof, I'm forgetting, what's the full name of that new business that's coming to town? Clubhouse Bunker? It's called The Bunker. It is called just The Bunker. Anyway, excited what they're doing. Basically, it is, I went and saw their operation. They need to get some things worked out with the city. Thank you for the city being actively working with that. But it'll be a great golf simulator place that is up, up in, near the, our recreational or park headquarters. But anyway, very, to, the owners are excited about it, really desire to make it a great place and are kind of new to this business. And so they're figuring it out, but it'll be great. Thursday, September twenty-fifth, attended the swearing-in ceremony for Police Officer Lopez. Also attended the city volunteer dinner. Thank you for all those who put that together. That's a lot of work. But it was a great sixties-themed event. And it was just, it's just very good to see the breadth of how many people volunteer to make this city work and run and be better. So that was great. Friday, September twenty-sixth, as I mentioned, I did, I had other commitments, so I couldn't actually paint rocks, but went to the fundraiser and did sign up for Instagram so I could use their, their, I'd use that to actually get my discount. So I encourage you to sign up for their Instagram account. September, or Saturday, September twenty-seventh, did attend the Hispanic Heritage Festival. Beautifully done. Lots of work. The display done by Sandy, et cetera. If you, I hope it's still up. It's just tremendous. And the artwork and Carolyn, who is, who put together historical of Mexican immigration and influence here in Simi Valley. It was just spectacular. It was, it was excellent. Sunday, September twenty-eighth, I too, and it's your fault, sat in the dunk tank. The reason it is Councilmember Ayala's fault is because when they asked me, they said, well, Councilmember Ayala's doing it, so you need to do it as well. What they didn't explain is that it's not just a regular dunk tank, but that it contained twenty, twenty packages of, of ice. And I was the last one that day, which means it had the entire day to melt and get colder and colder and colder. I just want to make that very clear. But the one thing that I. There, so, I want, and I had no idea, but I appreciated the text warning, so thank you. The one thing I did do is the night before, I just have to share this, I recognized it might, knowing that there was police officers involved, it might get a little, I just sensed it might be a little more rambunctious. Let me just put it that way. That's, and so I went out to defend myself and purchased squirt guns. I want you to know that if you're trying to buy squirt guns in October, it's out of season, just like swimsuits. And I had to go to three stores, and the third store I had to go to the back and pull out of their stock in the back. But I was able to get two squirt guns, one of which was a good water canyon, cannon. Is that right? Anyway, cannon. So I just want you to know that I was able to pretend, protect myself in the dunk tank. It was freezing cold, but I did, I want to tell you my negotiation skills. Because as the kids came up to throw the ball, I said, listen, who is your father? Who's your mother? If you miss, I will squirt your dad. And I want you to know that was rather successful, a few times, so anyway.
Can you also say what other item you used to squirt people with?
Well, there was a fire hose there as well. We had to use whatever we could to try to keep it safe, keep it fair. But it, I haven't been that cold in a long, long time. Let me just say that. But, but I want to commend the, those who put that together. Lots of funds were raised for the Explorer Program, which is a wonderful program for our police, and that's what that's all about. And so I just want to say thank you to all those who put, made that successful. The following week, October, Thursday, October second, also met again with our city manager, attended Commander Craig Duggan's retirement celebration. What a loss, what a great addition he's been to our, to our department. And just wish him the best. Just great innovation he's brought to our police force. On Friday, October the third, was involved with the Simi Valley Community Orchestra Concert. A thank you for those who volunteered, space for them to rehearse. Saturday, October fourth, when all of you were doing everything, so many things going on. Actually, my son got married. And so I just, I have to say, congratulations to Tanner. I was at his wedding and, and was making, helping to make that happen. So congratulations to Tanner and Brianna. May they live happily ever after. And I should conclude with that, except I will add today, I also did Royal High School's brown bag luncheon. And it really is a great, what was amazing, it holds eighty students. They had a hundred and thirty students sign up, and they have to, I mean, they, it's, anyway, it's amazing how many students they get to participate, who are engaged, who have questions about what we're doing. And so thank you to all those who are making that possible. But then again, back to congratulations to my son, and I conclude. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, well, from Tuesday, September sixteenth until Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, I was out of the state attending my older daughter's, my oldest daughter's wedding. So I want to say congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Cooper. It was a beautiful wedding. Oregon was beautiful that time of year. Only rained once, which was amazing to me. On Thursday, September twenty-fifth, I had a citizens meeting with somebody from the Samaritan Center. I think he's the new chairman of the board. We had a good meeting. He was explaining to me the way this Samaritan Center does their business. It was very interesting. That evening, I attended the city volunteer dinner, where I served food for the folks to volunteer for our city and do so much for our city. to volunteer for our city and do so much for our city, and I was very happy to do that, always am. On Saturday, September 27th, I spent most of the day setting up the Cops and Cruisers Car Show.
Thank you, Mike.
On Sunday, September 28th, I was helping at the Cops and Cruisers Car Show. On Tuesday, September 30th, I attended the SCAG demographic webinar. It was demographic and economic webinar, and that was four hours of my life I'll never get back. On Wednesday, October 1st, I attended SCAG's EAC meeting via Zoom. On Friday, October 3rd, I attended the VCTC meeting, and out of the VCTC meeting came Metrolink update. So all you folks that like to take the train to Santa Barbara, try to get it done in October. It didn't work. Try to get it done in November. It didn't work. So coming in January, you'll be able to take the train from Moore Park Station all the way to Santa Barbara and back, a few times a day. So I hope that's good news for some people. Other than that, there wasn't too much going on at the VCTC meeting. Moving on. Saturday, October 4th, I volunteered at Oktoberfest, and I poured beer there for a couple hours. Had a great time, talked to a lot of people, watched the band for a little while, and then that was it. And today, I attended the swearing-in of our newest officer, Officer Parker. That's the end of my report.
So no Dunk Tank. That's what I heard. No Dunk Tank.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kevin. Unfortunately, I didn't make it to your promotion, but congratulations. So on Tuesday, September 16th, I attended the First Annual Legacy Flame Awards, which was put on over at the Essence in Woodland Hills. Basically, they were honoring Revelation Church and Spirit Life Church for their contributions to our community. Met a lot of very nice people and re-met some other peoples that we had met at the church. So it was a very nice event. I enjoyed it and made some good friends and made some good contacts for us. And Thursday, September 18th, oh, I had a call with Assistant City Manager Luis with Los Angeles Business Journal about small business ads. And on that same evening, I attended the AWA 30th Water, Annual Water Member and Elected Officials Reception. It was actually a good opportunity because the last few years, it's been the same night as Little Black Dress. So even though Simi Valley is, quote, "the host," we weren't, we haven't been there. So it was nice to be able to go there. And let's see. On Saturday, September 20th, I attended also the Kid Gloves Boxing Foundation 30th Anniversary. Robert Ortiz was so excited and just so proud of this community and things that they have accomplished with their foundation. And we had some professional boxers there with their big belts. And I mean, it was pretty interesting. There were some big names there from the boxing world. But it was a very nice turnout. I didn't stay for the food, but I think Councilmember Ayala did. On September 21st, I also attended the Peace Concert that was put on by the Rotary Club at Rancho Simi Park. The rest of you call it Duck Park. It was a beautiful event. The students from Abbey Road at Santa Susanna High School were outstanding. They were, they did solos, then they did some group songs. And then we had our own Simi Valley Orchestra also performed, and they did a wonderful job. So it was, it was really a great event. I think we had a very nice turnout. On Thursday, September 25th, I had my weekly touch base with our City Manager, Argabright. And I unfortunately missed the volunteer dinner because of a scheduling conflict. They changed the time on the volunteer dinner. And so I had already committed to go to the Elks Lodge for a "Are You Prepared for Fire?" season with Supervisor Janice Parvin. And it was a great event. Obviously, the Elks are always good hosts. And then we had Assistant Chief Chad Cook, who did a lot of the speaking on the fire season, how things have changed. It was very interesting. And there was a fire that night. We're sitting on the, we're sitting at the speaker's table, and he leans over and shows me his little iPad with the fire. He goes, "It's at the north end of Arranger." And we're talking about how to prevent fires. So luckily, he goes, "This is a nuisance fire. They'll have it out." So, but they did. They got it out very, 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 very quickly. On Saturday, September 27th, I did, was able to attend the Hispanic Heritage Festival. They again did a great job at that. It's a wonderful event. They showcase a lot of talent and food and local vendors. It really is a great event and a good fundraiser for our Cultural Arts Center. I also, on Sunday, the 28th, attended the Cops and Cruisers Car Show. I was smart enough to not volunteer for the Dunk Tank. Actually, when I tried to go up and push the button for Councilmember Littler, she threatened me with that squirt gun that she had. So I did not push the button.
I was really approaching the button too close.
I was. I was just going to push it. But I, yeah, it was, exactly, exactly. Thursday, September 25th, I attended, oh, sorry, that's one I just did. Back over here to Wednesday, October 1st, I had my EDC Executive Committee in Camarillo for the afternoon. That's a good place to go. We get a lot of information on what's going on around in the county there. So I really enjoy going to that. On the 2nd, I had my touch base with our City Manager, and then I attended the retirement of Commander Craig Duggan. He is going to be a big loss, but he said 36 and a half years was enough. But the chief told me he's going to stay on as a technical reserve, right? So we can still utilize his expertise in the areas that he's so good at, like the IT and implementations of different programs. On Friday, no, Saturday, October 4th, I also helped at Oktoberfest. I also poured beer. It's a good way to meet a lot of, a lot of fun people. And they just really get a kick out of going, "Oh, my gosh, this is such a great Oktoberfest." A lot of, there were a lot of people from out of town there, and that was really, really a lot of fun. And that same morning, I attended the California Young Republican State Convention was held up at the Ronald Reagan Library. And so they asked me just to do a welcome and thank you for visiting Simi Valley. So I was able to attend that that morning. And then today, I had a Zoom call with the Simi Valley Town Center folks, with both our Assistant City Manager Luis Garibay and our City Manager, Smith Argabright. And that's the end of my report. That's enough for all of us, isn't it? I know. Thank you. All right. Item 10B, are there any agenda items for future, future council members? Or future council, I can't talk. It's been a long night. Any future agenda items?
Can we get an update on getting a presentation regarding the ICE scenario?
So there was recently state legislation that came into effect that does complicate issues for our police department. So with that in consideration, it was a little premature for us to bring it. However, the mayor and I are in communication about what that next step is going to look like and with legal as well as the police chief. So I am hoping to bring something back to the council. We just need to ensure that we're able to do it in a way that is accurate as well as, as well as clear, which is somewhat clear as mud, unfortunately.
Things are fluid.
Yeah.
Councilmember Littler.
So yes, thank you for that request, Councilmember Rhodes. I believe we all received a notification that the Suicide Bridge repairs on the Moore Park 23 has been delayed or been stopped. And that, at least, at least I saw, and there's not, the reason was not given for that delay. It was supposed to start in two weeks, and I just think it is so critical for our community. I would like us to follow up with Caltrans and find out what's the delay? Why is that being stopped?
I can tell you right now.
Oh, can you?
The fence has to be put together prior to installation. So it's basically a two-part process. They've got to put the fence together, and then they've got to truck it out to the freeway. And they've got to delineate a time where they can put it up in one fell swoop. They don't want to do it in, I think they reserved like three nights where they're closing the bridge. And because it got delayed in its initial assembly, it got delayed. That was it.
So do we have a date certain when it's going to be coming then, or?
Not yet.
Okay. What I would, maybe the request would be that we communicate to Caltrans how critical we think it is and would like them to make sure.
We can do that.
It doesn't just go away. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Littler. There's nothing else? All right, tonight, we will be adjourning in memory of Fred DeLuca Jr. as well as Rocky Daniel Carubé. Thank you.